Hey, Mike. Is that your membership of interest?
Yeah.
I like your shoes.
Phone says 6:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is technically a Board of Supervisors and Plan Commission joint meeting and public hearing. My name is John Fuchs. I'll explain how I'm here instead of your commission and board members sitting up here in a second, but I would first ask Karen, in terms of a roll call, you have those of us who are here as well as such plan commissioners or town board members that have appeared?
Right. Attorney Fuchs, I just want to note for the record that Chairman Carl Fortner, Supervisor Jeff Millie, Supervisor Gary Wildy, Supervisor Lorraine Dashick, Supervisor-elect Fred Maholic are in the audience. I do not see any other plan commission members at this point, sir.
Okay. The -- this is an open meeting, however, since it is also a public hearing, I'm also going to ask the clerk to state for the benefit of the record we're making, this has been noticed and published. Can you make a statement on that, please?
Yes, it has. Attorney Fuchs, this has been noticed in the legal section of the Muskegonau. It has been adjourned to this date set forth. The agenda has been posted inside and outside the Vernon Town Hall to the media, to businesses within the town of Vernon, and on the town of Vernon's website, so we are in full compliance with the open meetings law.
I had mentioned I'll explain to you how you're here with me sitting here in lieu of your commission and board. The matter that is before us this evening is a conditional use application, a conditional use being something that the zoning code contemplates, but it is not as of right, like just building your house on a single-family lot. It requires review, it requires approval, and there are criteria and procedures that must be met in the course of doing that. The ordinance that you have in effect in your town calls for a public hearing to be conducted jointly by your plan commission and by your town board. You'll notice that instead it is being conducted, or will be conducted, this evening by me. The short version of why we get there, how we get there, a town board, if you go back to whatever grade you took civics in, a town board is a single body, but you all remember hearing about you had the executive, the legislative, and the judicial branch. By the way, there's no quiz at the end of this, so don't worry about that end of it. Your town board most often acts like an executive or a legislative branch. It hires people, or it lets road contracts like an executive branch. It adopts policies through ordinances and resolutions, much like a legislative branch, but sometimes it acts like a judicial branch, or they use the term quasi-judicial. And it's really a difficult task or burden for town board members to switch those gears, because when you're acting the way you normally and most often act as executive and legislative branch, you're very involved in your community, you hear from people, you interact with them, you have opinions that you may express or whatever. When you're going to act in that quasi-judicial process, you're supposed to take everything, much like a court proceeding, at the hearing, neutral, impartial, no biases coming in. Very hard to do. What happened here is it reached a point where it was considered that the only way to really satisfy that quasi-judicial requirement and follow the statutes that govern conditional uses was to simply bring someone in, act as the hearing examiner, neutral, I don't know any of you, I have no dog in this show, as the slang term goes, listen to everything, apply it to your ordinances and make a recommendation ultimately to your plan commission and town board. In terms of why me, despite my youthful appearance, I have been around a while, I have done this before, and I appreciate greatly that people involved had the confidence that I could hear the facts, apply the criteria, look at your ordinances, and ultimately make a recommendation that tries to resolve this the way the law indicates it should be resolved. So that's how we get here. There's a clock right on the back wall. I managed to give you that kind of a background in under five minutes, so I hope I have not left any questions in terms of that. I will also let you know two things. I'm going to comment a little bit on the procedure, so you know what we're doing here tonight, and then at the end of this, you all get to go home without knowing what the recommendation is going to be, because I will take all of this, all of these documents, your code, that sort of thing, and reduce it to a written recommendation, and I'll do that quickly. I know this matters to many of you, it matters to the applicant, and so I think I now have something to do with the upcoming three-day weekend. What is important here, if I can go so far as to say this, there's information that's helpful. You have a code. There's about ten pages under your conditional use permit section that says what we're supposed to look at, and there are standards. What is the evidence that's to be heard? What are the things that are to be considered? Who's showing what? And in doing that, there's information that can be very helpful. I'll use a hypothetical that I don't think will apply to this. If there's a street that already has 30,000 cars on it, and something's going to add 10,000 cars, and the street was only designed for 20, that's very helpful for me to hear from folks like you who live here, who know that. It is not helpful to hear that if you're 11 miles away, you're sure your property values are going to go down, because that's just an opinion that comes up at pretty much every hearing, and it doesn't mean if you feel that, and there's a way of saying that it's applicable in this case, that I wouldn't hear it, but I'm just trying to give an example. The other thing is that we're going to follow a procedure, and the best way to understand that procedure is if you look at the agenda, and there's agendas posted in there about, there literally are nine subcomponents to this procedure. We're going to hear from the planner, so you've got an overview. The petitioner, the applicant, is going to make their presentation. Everybody will eventually get to be heard. One of the comments on here is public comments, so there's no need for anybody to interrupt each other. I recognize that these issues, especially if you live here, can be very important to you, so emotions can run high. We'll just keep it polite and objective. That'll be the most helpful way of getting to whatever the correct determination is here, and as I said, everyone will get their opportunity. So with that, the first question I have, since people in attendance are entitled to weigh in on this public hearing before we get to the general public comments, is there anybody that thinks that somehow procedurally or technically they want to bring something up, or they're saying, "We don't think you're following the law correctly," or "We don't think this hearing is being conducted correctly"? Because if you have such a viewpoint, I want to hear it before we start. I'll take it into account in terms of whatever recommendation I ultimately make. I'm not anticipating that, so if I hear from no one, we would go on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the town planner, Mr. Malarki, giving you an overview of how we got here. So nobody sees any procedural objections or some technical error that we're not following your ordinances? Then I'm going to ask Mr. Malarki to give these folks an overview of this particular project, which, by the way, is a request for a conditional use permit by Michael, and I assume it's pronounced Joy Alex, and the address is in the agenda, that sort of thing. That's why we're here. So fill us in, if you would, Mr. Malarki.
Thank you. So earlier this year, the petitioner approached the town of Vernon and inquired about starting an event barn operation in the town, and there was a particular property that was being looked at. I met with the petitioner and informed him that we don't allow event barns in the town of Vernon under the permitted uses or the conditional uses as they were written in our zoning ordinance. And so there was a provision in the ordinance that allowed for what's considered unspecified conditional uses, meaning if it doesn't exist in the ordinance, the town plan commission can determine whether or not that particular use would be a good fit for the town, based on the general criteria that is set forth in the conditional use section, and by just a general determination of whether or not they think it's a good fit. And as part of that process, the plan commission looked at the idea of an event barn in the town. One of the things they were tasked with was to figure out if it's determined to be a good use, what zoning districts it might be allowed in, and what conditions might be applied to that specific use, not just for a specific property, but anywhere in the town. So if it's ever proposed again, a set of conditions that could be followed and looked at, so that if it's proposed where it's currently being proposed tonight, or, you know, all the way across the town, these same conditions would apply and be applied uniformly. And so through a public hearing that was held on June 12th, and the code did not require a public hearing to be held, but the plan commission and board felt that it was important to do so, to be as transparent as possible about the process, determined through that hearing that event barns as an unspecified conditional use would be allowed in the town, would be generally seen as compatible with the town, and would generally meet the conditional use conditions that are set forth in the ordinance. They are, as of now, allowed as a conditional use in the agricultural districts, that's AB, AD-10, A5, A1A, A2, and A3, and there's about 20-plus conditions that were set up for all event barns that are being proposed that they would have to follow. So that sets the stage. Once that determination by the plan commission was made, the petitioner then submitted a conditional use application for his specific property that's at the end of County Line Road, on the border of the town of Vernon and the town of Waterford. And so that's what we're talking about tonight. What's specifically being proposed is an event barn, which is that unspecified conditional use, and a bed and breakfast on the property. The petitioner's family currently reside in the house, and they plan to operate the bed and breakfast in the home in conjunction with the proposed event barn use. The petitioner plans to combine the three existing parcels. There's basically three parcels out there that total about 120 acres. If you take out the Fox River, that's about 107 acres. Combine them into one, and then define the actual conditional use where the event barn would be applicable to a much smaller area, which includes the existing home and the farm structures. As was mentioned previously by Attorney Fuchs, there was an original public hearing that was held on this back in July 10th with the plan commission. This was just about the time that we were transitioning some changes in our zoning ordinance, and it was found that we had to hold the public hearing with the plan commission and the board based on those changes, so we took a step back and said, "Okay, we have to do this over." Many of you then attended the public hearing that was set for August 14th on this, and then that got moved to today with the hearing examiner. So that's been the process to date. The petitioner has submitted a complete conditional use application, which includes an overview for the event barn and bed and breakfast, information in the three properties, including the buildings' uses and the proposed lot combination, location information, including highway map, traffic counts, and setbacks, and offset distances, background information on the homes and buildings, proposed site plan, a plan of operation, project scope of work, building floor plans, a project timeline, and lighting fixture specifications. So that was submitted. I just want to add a little bit more about the process in terms of conditional uses, in terms of what's changed about conditional uses. So toward the end of 2017, Wisconsin Act 67 got passed in the legislature, and it basically changed the way conditional uses operate and are approved, and kind of made them quasi-judicial in nature. And so all decisions that have been, as is previously mentioned, they have to be made based on substantial evidence, facts and information, can't be merely personal preferences or speculation. So the applicant has to present substantial evidence of how he's going to meet all the conditions that are set forth, how he does meet, or how he will meet, and any other information that's submitted by any of you tonight should be based on substantial evidence as well. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Any condition that would be imposed by the town must be reasonable, and to the extent practicable, measurable, and may include conditions such as the permit's duration, transfer, or renewal.
Just one thing, if I could, Mr. Malarki. You mentioned the zoning districts. All three of these properties are contiguous. They attach to each other, and the zoning district, as I understand, it is your AD-10?
AD-10, correct.
AD-10.
Correct.
And that is one of the zoning districts that it was determined this process applies to?
Yeah, if I could just clarify that a little further. AD-10 is an egg district. That's the base district. There's also some overlay districts, which include environmental corridor, conservancy for wetlands, and high groundwater areas. There's also county zoning that extends under the property because of the buffer from the Fox River and the floodplains. That is also zoned AD-10 by the county. However, the county zoning doesn't intersect with the areas that are planned for the event barn and bed and breakfast uses.
Thank you. So let's now get to the petitioner's presentation. Their presentation may cause some of you to have questions. Either write them down, make a mental note of it, or whatever. Put yourself in a position to raise them when we get to the public comment part, because I am going to ask the petitioner to make their presentation, however they wish to do it, from start to finish, so that you get the whole picture. I've found that if you stop for one question, the presentation becomes fragmented and actually harder to follow. So you will get your turn, but if you have a question, you'll also get to raise it if I think it's appropriate to get further information from the petitioner. We will certainly do that. So I take it that Mr. or Mrs. Alex, you're set to proceed?
Yeah. And do you have the submitted materials, this info packet?
I do, I do.
Good, because I'll reference it.
Identify yourselves and give your address for the record, so we've got that in.
Michael and Joy Alex, S-110-W-23450, County Line Road, Waterford mailing address, town of Vernon. I wanted to just dovetail or add to what Sean said about the general process. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands the steps the town has taken in getting to this point, which has included being presented before two different plan commissions and two town boards, including a new chairman, a new board member, and three new plan commission members. It's been on two joint town board and plan commission meetings, and two additional plan commission meetings prior to tonight dating back to April 10th. So I know Sean mentioned the June meeting, but those previous meetings spanned, you know, multiple months. Also, in efforts to be as transparent and inclusive of public input as possible, both the original plan commission, it was heard before on April 10th, as well as the newly-established commission after the early 2019 elections, felt it prudent to solicit public comments in open public hearings for the very notion of an event barn as an unspecified conditional use. Those published public meetings were intentionally held on dates in which greater town business was being heard, namely impactful comprehensive zoning considerations, subdivision preliminary plaits, and other conditional use requests. It was brought up and held after what I have seen as the most well-attended meeting, that being the annual town meeting. As if that were not enough, in an effort to get as much exposure on the topic as possible within those meetings, the ordering of agenda items was structured in a way to allow for a 15-minute recess prior to the public hearing taking place, whereby any interested parties could stop watching the live stream online and make their way to the town hall for public comment. At the June 12th public hearing, there were a total of two speakers on the topic of an event barn, myself being one, and town resident Bob Vogel, the other, both speaking in support of an event barn as an unspecified conditional use for the town. During the four-plus months of considering an event barn as an unspecified conditional use, great care, research, and due diligence was performed by the town planner, the town attorney, the plan commission, and town board to take into account the many real issues such a decision would entail. For that reason, the town's ultimate language contains 22 specific conditions, many of which have multiple subpoints within them, setting a very high bar with a narrow scope for the event barns that far exceeds those of neighboring communities with similar land uses and qualities of life, including those in the neighboring town of Waukesha and all of Racine County, including Waterford. Throughout the entire process, and I would venture to say in every legal staff note that I have been made aware of, the realities of Act 67 and the ramifications of codifying event barn language is stressed. That state statute for conditional uses is what is being tested tonight, as the town weighs the concerns of some with the property rights of another. So as unfortunate as trying and trying as this process has become, at times we enjoy any opportunity to discuss our plans for Halverson House, tonight included, because we are excited for what it offers for our family, as well as the families we look to serve. Through our proposed site plans and business operations, we will demonstrate how we meet, or often exceed, the prescribed conditions of an event barn as an unspecified conditional use, as adopted by the town of Vernon zoning code. I did want to address the fact that unlike other meetings, Joy and I chose to have our entire family present, even if they're not in the room right now, during this meeting to show both the town, as well as our neighbors, who might not have taken the opportunity to hear our plans during our open houses, or their personal visits to our family home, that although my wife and mine names will be on the business paperwork or conditional use permits, we all are the Halverson House. This has been and will continue to be our personal residence 365 days a year, that we hope to share with others 30 to 70 days of that year, creating lasting, meaningful relationships with other families, either at their beginning in the form of weddings, or in their celebration of where they have been, in the form of reunions and holiday gatherings. As the new owners of such a one-of-a-kind property, only the second of whom are not a member of the original family which passed it down through five-plus generations, we're excited for what it is, as well as the potential we see it reaching. Some properties are labeled historic because they are old, but the Halverson House, as I saw it referenced in one of the State Historical Society files, is so much more than that. It is one of the original town of Vernon homesteads, with one of its patriarchs serving as one of the original town board members, evidenced by the fact that we found his copy of one of the literal first editions of the town of Vernon municipal code in the attic. Further research revealed the 1994 Milwaukee Sentinel story that highlights the home's carpenter Gothic style and tells the story of how it was the product of a self-trained local carpenter, whose rough sketches on plain paper and craftsmanship created a showpiece of his work to other prospective owners in the area. Subsequent remodeling has been the winner of national awards, seamlessly integrating additions to the ornate style of the original craftsmanship. Beyond its age and character physically is the history that took place within it. Paging through correspondence and newspaper clippings left in the attic of the home reveals how the original family, the Halversons, not only developed this beautiful property, but also had its hand in financing other projects, such as the building of the Knickerbocker Hotel in Milwaukee, or the Pitts Building in Kenosha, and as an investor in Joseph Brothers Lumber Company in Chicago that succumbed to bankruptcy during the Great Depression. Other family histories specific to the site are the fact that the current home, really the second on the site, with the first being a small cabin, was built in hopes that it would bring marendi out of hermalays after the tragic loss of one of the family's seven children from liver failure after falling into the grain silo. More favorable memories are also referenced as its use as a summer country getaway for extended family at the farm, or extensive impromptu meal spreads hosted by Etta Drought, likely some in this room, or their family members enjoyed. It's this history, both physically and in the community, that we are not only already enjoying ourselves, but are honored to be able to open up to others. We will be an asset to the community as a local means to host events close to home, while also drawing from the greater Milwaukee and even northern Illinois markets, and what better way to showcase Vernon and its history than Halverson House? That draw, as well as our all-inclusive or stay-and-play wedding weekend model, will create what is now called agritourism. We see that taking shape by advertising other local businesses to our guests, such as entertainment opportunities at Siege Paintball, Morningside and Edgewood Golf Courses, at local restaurants such as The Cruz, Papastas, Docs on the Fox in Blue Heron, for the day before or after an event which we host, or Day of Resources, such as wedding vendors like All Occasions Catering and Bubbs Barbecue, not to mention serving the local religious community, such as St. Joe's and Christ Lutheran. We see ourselves being a great asset to both our residential and commercial neighbors to work with and enjoy. As I have mentioned in my public comments during previous event barn ordinance meetings, it all starts with location. As a secluded 120-acre site, we say our location is one of its greatest assets, both for neighbors and guests, naturally positioned to be easily accessible but out of the way, private for our guests, and not disruptive to our residential neighbors. Additionally, the mature landscaping on the site creates natural buffers to neighboring parcels, which include crop fields, converted conservancy land, and the Fox River. Our proposed use as an event barn will maintain the agricultural nature of the site, grounds and outbuildings, giving them a new life, as opposed to the trend of dense residential development that predominates today's real estate climate, or the exclusive use by a single private party, as it had been for the last almost decade. With Wisconsin leading the nation in family farm foreclosures in 2018 due to the declining agricultural economics and more lucrative opportunities of land development, especially in more suburban areas like Vernon, preserving properties such as ours should be valued by all who appreciate the history of what has made Vernon and Wisconsin what it is today. We will not only be investing our time and efforts to preserve these attributes, but we will also be owner occupants to continue the residential use of the property in the neighborhood, and not be a conversion to strictly commercial. In the short time we've lived here, it's been great to have lifelong neighbors of the property venture back to meet us, telling us stories of how there was an artesian spring over there that they used to cool milk and water the cows with, or how my mom used to play cards right in the summer kitchen, or how the driveway used to run right through there. We appreciate the warm welcome we received from some, but to be honest, I think they were really more interested in seeing the house and grounds again to see what it had become, because for the last decade or so, that connection had been lost. Also, when talking about our plans and where we now live with anyone familiar with the area, I often get the response, "Oh, I know that house, that's beautiful," or "I always wanted to see what that place was like." Now with our plans to open the house for others' use, its beauty and one-of-a-kind setting can be experienced by both those who have known it for years, or are just in search of a special place for a special occasion. Next, taking the specific event barn ordinance item by item, starting with the definition phrasing. Item number one is egg zoning. Our zoning is AD-10. Item number two is that it is an agriculture or barn use. Since it's a somewhat involved site, and a picture is worth a thousand words, it'd probably be helpful to look at page seven of the packet that you have, and I'll work through the site.
Let me interrupt you one second. Is that, you're able to bring it up on, or you're going to do that? Okay.
We see that taking shape by advertising other local businesses to our guests, such as entertainment opportunities at Siege Paintball, Morning Sour and Edgewood Golf Courses, at local restaurants such as The Cruz, Papa Stash, Docs on the Fox in Blue Heron, for the day before or after an event which we host, or Day of Resources, such as wedding vendors like All Occasions Catering and Bubbs Barbecue, not to mention serving the local religious community, such as Saint Joe's and Christ Lutheran. We see ourselves being a great asset to both our residential and commercial neighbors to work with and enjoy. As I have mentioned in my public comments during previous event barn ordinance meetings, it all starts with location. As a secluded 120-acre site, we say our location is one of its greatest assets, both for neighbors and guests, naturally positioned to be easily accessible but out of the way, private for our guests and not disruptive to our residential neighbors. Additionally, the mature landscaping on the site creates natural buffers to neighboring parcels, which include crop fields, converted conservancy land, and the Fox River. Our proposed use as an event barn will maintain the agricultural nature of the site, grounds and outbuildings, giving them a new life, as opposed to the trend of dense residential development that predominates today's real estate climate, or the exclusive use by a single private party, as it had been for the last almost decade. With Wisconsin leading the nation in family farm foreclosures in 2018 due to the declining agricultural economics and more lucrative opportunities of land development, especially in more suburban areas like Vernon, preserving properties such as ours should be valued by all who appreciate the history of what has made Vernon and Wisconsin what it is today. We will not only be investing our time and efforts to preserve these attributes, but we will also be owner occupants to continue the residential use of the property in the neighborhood, and not be a conversion to strictly commercial. In the short time we've lived here, it's been great to have lifelong neighbors of the property venture back to meet us, telling us stories of how there was an artesian spring over there that they used to cool milk and water the cows with, or how my mom used to play cards right in the summer kitchen, or how the driveway used to run right through there. We appreciate the warm welcome we received from some, but to be honest, I think they were really more interested in seeing the house and grounds again to see what it had become, because for the last decade or so, that connection had been lost. Also, when talking about our plans and where we now live with anyone familiar with the area, I often get the response, "Oh, I know that house, that's beautiful," or "I always wanted to see that place, what that place was like." Now with our plans to open the house for others' use, its beauty and one-of-a-kind setting can be experienced by both those who have known it for years or are just in search of a special place for a special occasion. Next, taking the specific event barn ordinance item by item, starting with the definition phrasing. Number one, item number one is egg zoning. Our zoning is AD-10. Item number two is that it is an agriculture or barn use. Since it's a somewhat involved site and a picture is worth a thousand words, it'd probably be helpful to look at page seven of the packet that you have, and I'll work through the site.
Let me interrupt you one second. Is there, is that, you're able to bring it up on, or you're going to do that? Okay.
So at the north-central part of the wooded area is the original 1910 carpenter Gothic home, the site of the lodging or B&amp;B portion of the business, which I'll detail after the event barn language. Moving southwest between the two silos labeled Main Barn is the two-story dairy barn with walk-in shelter connected and running north and south lengthwise. This is the primary building, which will be renovated for the event usage. In total, it's roughly 3,400 square foot footprint. If you turn to pages 12 and 13 of your packet, that has some floor plans for those individual As a banquet barn, the lower level is at grade, and the upper level is above grade. The lower level on page 12 shows a large dining and cocktail hour area in the banquet barn portion, as well as circulation with the stairwell and lift, as well as a family bathroom, mechanical room, and NSF kitchen in the walk-in shelter area. You'll notice an outdoor courtyard, which is accessed from this lower level, and it has an existing CMU wall perimeter. Moving upstairs, which is then page 13, the upper level is the primary reception and banquet hall area in the banquet barn portion, flowing into the bar area, bathrooms, and storage in the walk-in structure. There's also a deck on this level overlooking the courtyard with stairs down to that space.
While they're doing that, NSF kitchen, just so everybody knows what you're referring to.
Sanitary, National Sanitary. I have terrible eyes, so I'm a bad person to ask. So this, this is the main barn area, so it's kind of shaped as a nest, so I'll start towards the bottom. The two circles left and right are the front silo and the rear silo. Running vertically labeled is the dining and reception area. That's where, you know, your traditional reception time would be taking place, your dinner and dancing. Kind of overflowing to the right is where a bar area would be, and kind of overflow seating for the main dining hall. Those two squares, the small square rectangle to the right where the cursor is, that's an elevator shaft. One thing that we've found is ADA access is difficult for these venues, oftentimes involving a multiple switchback ramp. So, oh, it won't show up on the LED. It's worth a shot. Yeah, so that cursor is an ADA chairlift, and then just north of that with the double arrows, that's the access corridor, so everything can be accessed inside if there is inclement weather. Just north of that, or south, but up in this picture, are the restrooms, so male and female restrooms having to meet commercial code, and then just storage. This shows also that courtyard area, that's the outdoor cocktail space that's in the hatch marks, and then the deck overlooking that space. So if we jump back to page seven, Karen, that'll be the site plan again. So we're just in that north barn, which is in this picture, yep, right where Karen's cursor is. Just to the west of that building is a long, narrow chicken coop, which is going to remain a chicken coop, and then just to the right of that building is a previous horse barn, and it's tucked behind, so you probably can't even tell, yep, right behind the silo, that's a horse barn, that'll remain just for our use and storage. Moving to the east, so to the right on this picture, in the bottom pane, there's an old hog barn, so farther over to the right, Karen?
Right there. Yep, so that's an old hog barn, right now, that's beyond repair. We're going to section that off. The hopes are that in time, we'd be able to rehab that and be able to have that kind of as a, for lack of a better word, little historic site, museum site for some of the agricultural equipment there, but for our purposes, that's going to just be sectioned off. Just north of that is what was the old granary building. That's a two-story structure that's going to be used as the groom's quarters for wedding types of celebrations. Yep, yep, the small building just above the cursor there. The ground themselves will allow for weddings on the south lawn, so just north of that granary building, if you scroll up, Karen, with your mouse, right there, it shows three big ash trees, those have been removed, those had emerald ash pour and had been treated, but were dead, and so that space has been developed, or will be developed, as the lawn space for hosting the outdoor ceremonies. The roughly 30 acres in the northwest portion, so it kind of wraps up and around, is currently farmed, and that'll remain being farmed as tillable fields. Operationally, we will offer the site for use by those celebrating a variety of occasions, from weddings and anniversaries to family reunions, to corporate events such as fundraisers or holiday parties. All events will be pre-scheduled with no open-to-the-public events. So all of that was kind of preamble, that got us through the definition that the town has for an event barn. So now we're going to go subitem by subitem. Item number A is the minimum lot size of 20 acres. The current land divisions are outlined on page three of your packet. We own a total of 120 acres. A CSM will be used to combine the existing three parcels in a fashion to meet town and county requirements, including the 20-acre minimum event barn requirement. The town does not allow for the combination of tax keys in a way other than through a CSM, which due to the shoreline areas, has county input on as well. We have been in contact with them regarding their requirements, and will continue that process formally once we are given the necessary approvals by the plan commission in town. As part of that process, and in working with the county, we further define the extents of the conditional use area, which is represented by the dashed red line on the site plan in order to keep any difficulties with shoreline zoning that Sean mentioned from becoming an issue for the conditional use, since those aren't part of our proposal. Also, those dashed lines, and if you were given the 11 by 17, Attorney Fuchs, that's better represented on this large 11 by 17.
Have them in that size, but if you, is that extra?
So what I'm describing now is that red dashed line that follows kind of in a flag shape. That will be described with a meets and bounds description on the CSM to define where the activity for the event barn and bed and breakfast use is limited to. So that'll be one section within the larger parcel. Another side note is that in starting these discussions with the county, they expressed some interest in some of the land abutting the Fox River, which might impact what is included in the final CSM, but ultimately with 120 acres, the 20-acre minimum would be easily maintained. Item B, under the conditions, is the 100-foot setbacks from residential lots. This, again, it's helpful to look at that 11 by 17 site plan to see the setbacks to each property line from the closest improved areas, which includes anything from an outdoor wedding site to parking. To the east, there's almost 800 feet to the neighboring parcel, to the easternmost activity, which would be the bed and breakfast parking. This land is a mixture of farmland and managed woodland, which is de-disstricted to the DNR. It also shows that we are 50 feet from our southern neighboring property line, which is a conservancy in the CREP program entered into between landlords, the state, and USDA. The Conservation Reservation Enhancement Program puts formerly agricultural lands into conservancy after being brought to a natural state. That documentation is a private land contract between the parties, which is not publicly recorded, but monitored by agencies for compliance. That being said, the map, I'm not sure if you received that from the plan commission, I've got another set of copies here.
The large ones like you've been dealing with?
Yeah, so it's, so this is the overall map, and then this is a blown-up version of the area in question. That being said, the map is the public record of those lands, which show the property in question labeled with the blue star, as well as an acknowledgement by the owners in their letter submitted to the town August 12th stating that the public, that the subject property is enrolled in the program. Item C, the occupancy requirement, as I stated, my wife and our five kids currently live on the property and will continue to do so. Item D is that it has to be on an arterial or on a collector street within one mile of an arterial. First, we fall into the latter category of being located on a collector street with access from County Line Drive, which turns into Halverson Road, continuing south from our property. A collector street is defined in the Vernon Code as a street used or intended to be used to carry traffic from minor streets to the major system of arterial streets, as shown on page four of your packet. Our site is entered from County Line Road, which carries local roads such as Rab Road, Linda Lane, Oak Hill Lane, Grove Lane, Lake Drive, Olivet and Racine County, to the arterials of Big Bend Road, also known as 164, which is approximately 3/4 of a mile away, and North Lake Road, which is approximately 0.94 miles away. Also on that page, you'll see the Wisconsin DOT average daily traffic counts, showing that there's approximately 760 cars per day at the intersection of County Line Road and 164. While there are roughly only 12 residences directly on County Line and Halverson Road within a mile of Highway 164, this increased traffic is a direct example of County Line Road acting as a collector of many minor streets to the south. Item E is that it's served by private onsite water treatment and well. The barn supply plumbing will be served by a new onsite well, as well as the necessary building, necessary holding tanks per the occupancy and load requirements. We had the soil and perk tests done, and verbal acceptance from the county of holding tanks for our use, and we're in the process of getting engineering and final county approval for those systems. Item F, use limitations. We will only host one event per day and no more than three events per week. The term "event" is clarified in the zoning language proposed by staff because for an all-inclusive experience where a family can have a, what we call a wedding weekend on our site, moving into the house on a Friday afternoon, having rehearsal dinner that evening, a small group of them staying overnight, waking up Saturday to breakfast in preparations for their wedding day, other guests arriving and enjoying the wedding ceremony and reception, that same small group staying onsite Saturday night, then comfortably waking up the following day to have a Sunday gift opening before checking out from the site on Sunday afternoon. That scenario will be considered one event. Otherwise, hosting one of these wedding weekends would have precluded an operator from hosting any other event during the week. To the neighbors, please understand that the size of those events, the rehearsal dinner and gift opening, are approximately 25 to 50 guests, and that would not have the equivalent impact of a three-wedding weekend, which I think was of greater concern and the reason for the town including those limitations. Item G, our original proposal and request was for an occupancy of 200, well below the 300 event barn max allowed in the code, but after Attorney Macy's review, he suggested the language be further defined as attendees, which includes all guests, support staff, and vendors, so we are conservatively requesting that full occupancy at 230 attendees, which includes all of those parties. Weddings, which would include sit-down dinners held in the main barn, will typically be more in the 175-person range. The 2018 average wedding size was 124 guests. As stated, a conservative approach was taken by assuming a 200-person guest capacity, although that number would likely be, rarely if ever reached. Item H, our operating hours will be limited to Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., which includes all setup and teardown. Guests will be required to vacate the premises 30 minutes prior to the site close, 9:30 Sunday to Thursday, and 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. Again, we're restricting our hours more than what the town requires, and just to reiterate, that includes anything, setup or teardown, so all of our staff would be lights-out at 11:30. Guests would be gone at 11:00. Item I is that alcohol will be served until 10:30 p.m. Friday and Saturday, and 9:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, just as beer sales are cut off at a baseball game after the seventh inning. This is to have a slow progression of closing down for the night. Item J, an alcoholic beverage license will be...
Can I back you up to I?
Yep.
Give me, give me the hours again.
Yeah, so the alcohol service, or do you want the operating hours or the alcohol service?
The operating, I have the alcohol service.
Alcohol service will be cut off at 10:30 p.m. on Friday through Saturday, so Friday and Saturday, and then 9:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday.
Thank you.
Item J, an alcoholic beverage license will be obtained from the Town of Vernon. This will give us the greatest ability to monitor and control what many see as one of their greatest concerns. Operationally, we will not allow shots of any kind, and our staff will be trained on safe-serving practices, and our contracts will allow for us to deny service to anyone at our sole discretion. Carrying beverages are also not permitted on the site and will be monitored so we are the only means by which guests could be served alcohol, with our contract giving us the ability to stop alcohol service for the entire site if outside alcohol is found being consumed. Item K, sound amplification. It might be helpful to look at page five of your packet to see the proximity to neighboring residential uses. That said, the sound amplification will be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. outdoors, and 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. indoors, with all amplification devices at least 100 feet from the property lines, in our case, 840-plus feet from the east property line, and over 250 feet from the south conservancy property line. The Chapter 221 noise ordinance of 65 decibels at the lot line, which is the same threshold required to be met by any residential property, will be maintained and strictly enforced as well. To date, we have performed multiple sound tests. The first was done as initial fact-finding with the naked ear to gauge the noise impact of the street, at the street and from the street in front of the nearest residential homes, in which we heard little to nothing above the normal ambient noise of the area. We also let it run until 10:00 p.m. and got no complaints or questions, including from the closest neighbors who were outside gardening on their property at the time. The following day, I saw Mr. Strasser while filling up at his gas station, and I brought up that we were doing a sound test and asked if he could hear when they were gardening. He said that he couldn't, but his wife Leanne said she could hear something and joked that they weren't invited to the party. Then, as a more tangible means for documenting noise levels, we purchased a decibel meter, again setting up a surround sound system in the barn to test the noise levels. With readings bouncing between 85 and 95 decibels in the barn, we walked to not only the street, but also the nearest property line to the south, and had readings hovering around 45 decibels. Then, after it being called into question that the noise equipment used for our self-performed test was insufficient by neighbors, we hired a professional DJ to bring in his sound equipment and perform a sound test that included music and microphone simulations. And I have some documentation that we were able to just put together regarding that.
Why don't you comment on the result? Because they're not seeing what I'm seeing.
Yep, I'll go through that. To create redundancy and prove accuracy, two different brand and model decibel meters were used, each of which with an advertised accuracy rating within 1.5 decibels. As a baseline, the ambient noise in the barn from simply the DJ setting up in the barn swallows above created a reading of roughly 55 decibels. Then, beginning the tests and reaching levels from 85 all the way up to 105 decibels in the barn itself, we again checked levels at the nearest property line to the south, as well as halfway down the driveway, where we reached roughly 59 decibels and roughly 45 decibels at their peaks. In order to push the limits of this test, we kept the large barn doors fully open, which they will not be when operating, and had the DJ raise the levels to what we felt was an uncomfortable level within the barn. Additionally, from an operational standpoint, we will have policies in place to ensure that we can meet and exceed the 65-decibel lot line threshold, including not allowing any subwoofers onsite, which provides the bass that tends to carry farther than other sound. We also will utilize house speakers in the courtyard for the cocktail hour portion of the evening, which again is limited until 8:00 p.m. Also, we will only allow DJs to be chosen from our preferred vendors list, who are familiar with our site and policies. Finally, our contracts will allow us, as the operators, total control of the noise amplification, including everything from modulation to turning off the system completely if rules are not followed. Item L, the exterior lighting, this is on page 15 of the packet. Item L, the exterior lighting, this is on page 15 of the packet. We will include three parking lot poles with dual heads mounted at 15 feet from finished grade with full cutoff fixtures. The photometrics of that design are on the back of the spec sheet and show only one-tenth of a foot candle 62 feet from the light location. So with the 130-foot wide parking lot as we show, we have a one-tenth of a foot candle at the edge of that parking lot, which itself is set back 50 feet from the adjacent conservancy property and over 800 feet from the street or any possible residential use. Parking lot lighting will be governed by photo cells and only used when events are taking place. Then, lining the driveway at 150-foot spacing will be traditional residential post lights mounted at 84 inches and shown at the end of your info packet. The photometrics for these lights show one-half-foot candle at a 10-foot radius and one-tenth-foot candle at 20 feet. They will be approximately 15 feet from the south line as they're shown. These will also be on photo cells, but will likely be illuminated nightly on a time clock, whether having events or not, as they are a more typical residential fixture. It would be an improvement done regardless of a conditional use request and fit with the similar applications. The next page shows the three post-light fixture, which will be located at the Y in the driveway, well on the interior of the site. That's to illuminate directional signage at that junction. Also included are the uplights for the eventual monument sign, whose general location is included on your site map, but details are not included for this application as its design are still being finalized, and any approval will be attained once formally proposed. Item M is that we propose for a portable-
Mr. Alex, let me interrupt you once again. Folks, a lot of you are standing, and there are some seats that say "reserved," but they're not occupied, and then we have some chairs, sitting on chairs in the back. If you want, I'll just ask them to stop for a few minutes, or you're content to stand? Now, I'm obviously the oldest guy in the room, but the-
All right, moving right on. Item number M, we propose for a portable commercially-made fire pit in the southeast corner of the courtyard, and I gave you my 11 by 17, but that's marked on that 11 by 17 site plan. Item number N, parking. Again, returning to that 11 by 17 site plan, you will see 80 spaces provided for guests and vendor vehicles. That's a one-to-three ratio at 230 attendees that would require 77 for max occupancy, including staff. That's located at the southern part of the site, where it's currently a farm field, they called the pumpkin patch. There's also Halverson House staff parking for an additional four vehicles on the existing asphalt-paved parking pad behind the northwest corner of the home, so it's shaded in red on that site plan, right where Karen is now. The locations for parking were specifically chosen to bring them as far onto the site as possible, situated among mature trees and landscaping. It also places the parking lot, which will have limited activity throughout the duration of events, as a buffer closest to the neighboring lot, rather than having more high-impact activities such as an outdoor reception area or even ceremony site in that vicinity. Item number O is that the parking lot is proposed using a 60-degree 10 by 20 stall sizing per code and 18-foot one-way drive aisles with a combination of gravel and Geocell reinforced grass with directional signs. So, it's basically a honeycomb system that allows you to have parking on grass or turf, but have the ability to have something as large as a school bus or fire truck to drive on it, gives it structure. The parking area is well-screened naturally by mature, existing trees, and again is set well back off the street and away from any other structures, and done so to limit any impact on neighboring uses. Item P, ample parking is provided onsite for guests, vendors, and staff. Again, the prescribed one-to-three ratio, the code requires, similar to the banquet halls. Additionally, this assumes a max-capacity crowd and vendors totaling 230 attendees, with a more practical number of between 150 to 200 total attendees, including staff, being often the case for wedding events, which will be the largest events. Item Q, it limits outdoor tents to 3,400 square feet based upon our event barn footprint that we went over with that main barn. Item R is that the natural landscaping provides sufficient parking screening. Item S, exterior improvements and repair to match existing with board and batten, car siding, and similar aesthetic with a continued barn-red and white trim painting scheme. Some buildings on the site have been resided and all repainted, so anything that will be further repaired will be done to match. Decking material will be of a weather-resistant style and incorporated to seamlessly fit with the existing aesthetic. A full scope of work is included in your packet on page 11, outlining other deferred maintenance exterior items such as roof replacement, silo repair, and foundation tuck pointing that will also take place. Item T, the floor area of the existing buildings is not proposed to be expanded at this time, with the exception of a deck for access and egress, which will not be interior space, but instead exterior. Item U, it's pending final fire department review of plans showing ample access via the existing drive and proposed parking lot, both of which meeting NSTA requirements for turning radius, as well as state building code requirements, and the installation of a Knox box for manual entry to any locked buildings. Item V is that there's a two-year review process that will be held to, also annual review for other licensing, as well as complaints could trigger action and possible revocation of our conditional use status. Having gotten through the event barn aspect of the application, we now turn to the bed and breakfast application. From our business plan perspective, this aspect would really be considered more lodging, in our view, because we are not looking to operate as a day-to-day bed and breakfast with single-room rentals to different individual guests. Instead, we see it functioning more in conjunction with the event barn rental and use in the scenario of a wedding weekend or stayover package, as well as a family reunion type of situation. That being said, the zoning code has the language for bed and breakfast, and that's where it fits best. So, taking those items one by one. Item A is that no structural changes are proposed at this time for the home, as it is a seven-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home sufficient for our and our guests' needs. As for the grounds, the only adaptation will be to install the Geocell, again, that grass, turf pavement, five-stall parking lot in the northeast corner of the conditional use area. Item B, off-street parking. Again, stalls provided on the east lawn with the Geocell reinforced grass lot among the existing mature landscaping. Item C, that rooms be limited to up to five sleeping rooms. Five rooms are available for lodging. Currently, there are seven bedrooms. Item D, there will not be any bed and breakfast specific signage, just a general monument sign for Halverson House as a site, again, to be applied for and approved at a future date. Item E is that state and county permits and requirements would be obtained and maintained for use. Item F, room rentals will not exceed 14 days. Our ideal tenant would be there for the wedding weekend, or at most, the family reunion, which would be a one-week rental maximum. Item G, it is accessory to the single-family dwelling with owner occupants. Again, the same as the event barn, we currently live in the home and will continue to reside in the home as our day-to-day home. Item H, the breakfast, that breakfast is only supplied for bed and breakfast use. Any other food preparation would have to happen and would happen in that full NSF kitchen in the barn, which is why that is included. Item I is that Waukesha County Environmental Health has to make their determination after doing their site inspections. That works through all of the bed and breakfast-specific items, which is a good segue into some of the general conditions that are either still in development or pending approval by various agencies and departments, largely from the technical perspective of engineering calculations, reports, and details. Those items include approval by the Waukesha County Health Department for the bed and breakfast and kitchen facilities, the Waukesha County Parks and Land Use for the CSM and wetland delineations. We would propose to the county to delineate the subject area and not the whole 20-acre site, as most is being left as-is, and since our last discussion, they were on board with that. Waukesha County Department of Land Use Resources would have their hand for any stormwater management plans if necessary, as well as erosion control plans for the construction phase. Also, Waukesha County Department of Environmental Health for the final septic review. Their initial indications are the acceptability of the holding tanks, as I mentioned previously. Once all of these details, once all the details of these items are flushed out with the various departments and the final site plan is completely developed, they will be submitted and reviewed by town staff to meet the requirements proposed and outlined in general here. Likewise, detailed floor plans and engineering calculations to meet commercial and town building codes will be formalized and submitted to building department staff for review and approval to attain all necessary building and mechanical permits. That's all I got.
Just to clarify one thing, the, the way you stated it, I believe you were indicating that the bed and breakfast is only used in conjunction with the events?
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that. We have had submitted, and it goes back to even previous hearings, many written comments by members of the public, and those have been provided me as part of the items that I'm going to be looking at in terms of drafting this recommendation. So, I'm assuming those people have no objection to their written comments staying here. Is there anybody here that filed a written comment that wants, for some reason, to pull it or let it not be considered? And seeing none, we can move on to the public comment portion. What would be easiest, did you use a sign-up sheet or anything like that by any chance?
I'm sorry, Attorney Fuchs, we do have a sign-up sheet, but typically, we allow anybody to speak as long as they identify their name and address.
When it is a public hearing, anybody will be allowed to speak, but you got a sign-up sheet? For those who actually noticed the sign-up sheet and signed it, we'll give them priority and start with them. After that, we'll just go by raising hands if that works for everybody.
Attorney, put up another sign-in sheet right there.
That'll make it even easier. So, if you didn't sign the first one, please sign the last one, and we'll start with the first one. I already can't for sure recognize the handwriting. Is it Jeff DeVolk? That's you, sir?
Yeah, the question I got is, what's this unspecified use?
The-
You know, we know this could be a complex plan, you know?
The, in terms of the unspecified use, some communities phrase it as "any other similar uses," that sort of thing. One of the things that I've been given, and I think one of the things Mr. Malarky referred to, is that it may be unspecified, but that gets rounded out. In this instance, we're talking about this event barn, so we have a name for it. And then, we have many, many conditions, definitions, limitations. If you proposed an event barn and it went beyond any of those limitations, then they're not presenting, as was described, substantial evidence that they conform to those requirements and are entitled to approval by way of the converse side of that consideration. If you have concerns that something you've heard may go beyond those limitations, or is for events that should not be allowed, or whatever, that's the type of thing that is something that hopefully will come out in the course of this hearing.
Yeah, one other thing, too. This is the town of Vernon. Who's going to police this? It's going to be the town of Waterford. It's going to be a burden on them. It's going to be a burden on the town of Waterford Fire Department and Rescue, you know?
And by the way, some of the-
It's going to be a financial burden on the town of Waterford.
Some of these questions I'm going to take as rhetorical. In other words, this gentleman is pointing out a concern that, are we hearing who's going to police this? Is it going to place a burden? I'm really not here as a witness or to answer the questions, but you're phrasing them as questions, but I am getting your concerns. Does that make sense to you? Go ahead.
Excuse me, Attorney Fuchs, if people could please speak into the microphone, you can't hear, you know?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're facing me, so I can hear you fine. When we speak-
You're going to be loud, I'm sure.
No, I've got a tech thing. What is he saying?
Oh, if you want to come up and use the mic, I think that mic can even be pulled out.
That's a couple of my concerns. I think somebody else should be allowed to speak.
Oh, we're going to go as long as you need.
Okay. All right, well, I might have something to say in a few minutes, you know?
Okay, well, what we'll do is, everybody gets their first shot before anybody gets their second shot. That's one thing we will follow, but thank you, sir. Rick Strasis? Tom, is it Strasis or Strasser? We have a, you have your first family event here. Leanne, are you coming up?
I'm Dan, I'm Dan and Leanne.
Oh, you're both-
We're simultaneously.
Have a seat jointly, and I'll let you sort out who wants to comment.
Sure. I'm Dan Strasser, this is my wife, Leanne Strasser. We own the CRP field, the land next to the event barn-proposed property, the CREP field. So, we have common border all the way from Halverson Road, all the way to the back of his property. So, I'm here to express some concerns. We bought this property eight years ago, me and my wife did. We bought it with the thought of having it as our retirement property, where we're going to have a retirement home, recreational land. Where the kids and the grandkids and everybody come over, we hunt, fish, recreate, garden, make maple syrup, all things that we do at this point right now. All things to nature, we're all about the outdoors, so. We do not currently reside there, but we certainly live there, all right? And this event barn is definitely going to destroy, destroy the qualities of our land and why we bought it, unquestionably destroy it. The activities, the noise, the rhetoric, everything's just going to ruin all the qualities about this sanctuary land that we have there.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm writing, so-
Sure.
I hope nobody construes that as not paying attention.
No, I understand, I understand. So anyways, I'm very concerned about what this is going to do to our property, okay, and the way we bought it. I've been pretty much up in arms the last eight weeks about this, sleepless, wondering what's going to happen. I mean, I couldn't envision what was going to happen if all this traffic and commotion goes down there. Mike stated he had a few tests about his amplification and what the readings were at the lot line. I did not hear him say anything about testing the outdoor amplification outside of the barn and where those readings were at the lot line, or that I trusted what he had read at the 59 decibels at the lot line, even with the amplified barn music, you know? There's no, no crowd murmur, there's no other factors besides the amplified music, so I guess I couldn't take that as gospel, what he said. I'd have to have much more proof than that, that they could retain the 65 decibels at our lot line, which in fact is only 250 feet from the outdoor activities and barn. Which, for those that don't know how close 250 feet is, a square acre of land is 108 feet by 108 feet. So, 250 feet is only slightly more than an acre, all right? And he claims that all these mature trees are going to block all this noise. Well, guess what? All those mature trees are pretty much mine, okay? So, I could be sitting up underneath any one of them without the aid of blocking any of the noise from these mature trees, I mean. All right? So, that being said, second point here is that he claims that our land is in a CREP program, which it is, okay? That does not click, doesn't change the zoning or the application of that land one bit, okay? So, by him moving his land, setbacks from 100 feet to 50 feet is fabricated in his brain. I have no idea where he came up with that. He's a land developer guy, he obviously should know the rules, he's fabricating that. I have a letter that you have, from our common zoning commissioner, Brian Johnson, that states that fact, okay? So, I don't know why he's trying to run off over us with these facts and blow steam-up irrigators, whatever. I was just, I've been irritated, obviously, you can tell by the tone of my voice, I've been extremely irritated by this whole procedure.
Well, I will say this, I appreciate that you're controlling the irritation, I think you're presenting very nicely, so.
I'm nervous, obviously, I'm not a good public speaker, I'm doing the best I can.
Never stops me.
All right.
So-
So anyways- So anyways, I also was concerned, it said it had to have 100 foot setback, parking lot, buildings, things to make this place operational, okay? That doesn't include the driveway? Does the driveway have to be moved 100 foot off the lot line? I mean, they didn't address the driveway one bit in this presentation, not at all. It runs right down the lot line, gray line area, if it's on the lot line, it's probably off, I'm not claiming I own any of that driveway, it's pretty darned close. If so, is there any setback requirements for that? And if there isn't any setback requirements, is there any trespassing protection for me? I mean, how are they gonna keep their wheels only on the driveway, come off the driveway a little bit for trespassing, you know? So I guess I'm concerned with that, nobody's addressed that, nobody's addressed any of the ingress egress stuff at all.
And this is an example of the comments that I will take into account. Basically, what I'm hearing is, in terms of conditions and what I'm supposed to be looking at and how does this lay out when I review this all, I've certainly got your concern noted. I'll look at that again. I'm not, I'm not going to make some kind of a finding like I'm the surveyor.
I mean, we had this site planned, I'm doing all the red lines, for some reason, he skipped the whole way in until he got to the parking lot, never talked about it for some reason.
I'm not gonna control how he presents it, I do have documents that I'm gonna consider, but go back to your concerns, sir, because you were doing nicely doing that.
I'm just concerned about that driveway and the setbacks and what's gonna control his cars, if he does get this to go through, from potentially driving on my land, which is darned close to some, I don't, we don't have a survey, apparently Mike doesn't have a survey yet either, but I didn't think it was my job to prove where the driveway was, I would've thought it would've been his job to prove where it was, so at that point, I would like to know where the driveway is and what provisions we're gonna have to control the trespassing. Even wheel traffic, and walking traffic, but wheel traffic for sure, I mean, they're not gonna stay on that driveway perfectly, I don't think. It's a very narrow driveway, which is gonna be addressed later on from some of my other presenters, okay? So thirdly, the impact on the community, in my opinion. I got a letter from Mike and Joy yesterday, and it was a very nice letter, he had to read through it a bit, and they expressed concern that I went out personally and riled up the whole neighborhood without having the facts and not knowing exactly what they wanted to do, and basically threw them under the bus, I guess, is what I took it as possibly, okay? So, I don't know, I didn't know how to take that. I'm a pretty even keel guy, I haven't been mad about anything very likable. So I guess I just wanna let everybody know here, being the immediate property owner to the south, I did get a public notice from the clerk, from the town of Vernon. Nobody else did, I mean, only their immediate people did. I felt it was in my best interest, in the interest of my community, my fellow neighbors, that I reach out and let them know what was going on. And me and my wife created a petition page, and I work really a lot, so I don't have a lot of time, so after work, 7 o'clock at night, I'd be pounding on doors Saturdays and Sundays when I didn't have other events going on for the last several weeks, not the last several weeks, prior to this first meeting that got setback. We'd go, not in a large radius, in a small radius, okay? Up and down Halverson Road to a point, all the way down County Line Road, River Avenue, which is the closest avenue that's gonna be affected in the town of Vernon, and a few of the cross streets off of Halverson Road. The neighbors that are within a half a mile of this event barn, okay? Knocked on their doors, most of them probably know who I am, I've been living in that community for 57 years, they know who I am, okay? So...
Let me, let me help you out here, if I could. And I don't mean this to be rude, I mean this to keep it on track. Nobody's motives are really an issue here. This gentleman has the right, as a member of this community, to tell as many people about this as he wants, that sort of thing. So in terms of focus, and I do wanna keep it focused, you're not being questioned in that respect. You mentioned you actually have a petition, some of the criteria is how does something impact the neighborhood or whatever?
Right.
Then I'm interested, I'm interested in anybody who's got anything they wanna make part of the record.
So anyway, did this half mile circle, houses that were gonna be directly impacted by this, I didn't go into Golden Melon, I didn't go everywhere else, okay, to clarify that. I went just in a small radius, okay? Never once bad mouthed the Alexes in any way, shape, or form. Told most people that they're wonderful young people, very articulate, very nice to deal with, but this is what they wanna do. And we had a little four point presentation, which was right off of their sheet, what they were asking the town of Vernon, nothing fabricated, and showed it to them. And without, 97% of the people signed it without even asking, do you have a petition? I wanna sign that. Everybody was against it except three, and they just wanted more information, okay? So we have 101 signatures from those people that we've visited within a very small area, so I guess that would speak volumes of what the people in our area think about stuff in a commercial venue in our residential agricultural neighborhood.
And I'm gonna suggest you leave that with me, but just so people are aware, and somebody stated earlier, whether it was Mr. Alex or Mr. Malarki, that what we're dealing with here is a balance, the community's interest in it and the feelings about it and the property owner's rights. The one thing that this won't come down to, just so everybody's clear on that, and I'm not suggesting I'm picking a side already or anything like that, but the property owner has a burden of showing that they have presented the substantial evidence, that they fit the criteria, the legal criteria, that sort of thing. The one thing that doesn't control it is if 100 people vote no, we don't vote on somebody else's land use.
No, this is a popularity, this is showing that everybody's against it.
But it shows compatibility, that's what I'm interested in seeing. But just so nobody gets the wrong impression that this gets controlled in that fashion.
And I swore I never once said you have to sign this, this is terrible. I gave them their information, they made their own decision and they signed it free willingly, all right?
Not suggesting you didn't. Just, if you have it, I will be happy to include it with these materials.
All right. So then, from there, I guess I'm gonna, there's much more public concern, there's many more people that can tell you about public concern. At this point, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mark Henderson, he's been helping me through some of this process all along, and he's gonna have some further specific questions for you guys also, so...
If you wanna continue down the list, that's fine, I'm one of the guys that didn't know there was a sign up sheet.
Okay. The, well, let's, I said I'd go with the list, so let's, in fairness, do that. Lance, is it Galun?
Yeah, oh, my comment told you that I was going to...
And we have a Dave McCalsey, McColsky?
McColsky.
And I think it is Julian, help me out. I have to apologize, apparently you're on Grove loan or Gravely?
Yeah, we're there.
Well, you're good. The Dave or Hedy Barts?
Yeah, I have a question.
Come on up, sir, if you would, so everybody hears it.
Yeah, I had a question after seeing that presentation.
Can you use the mic a little bit, 'cause I'm even having trouble hearing you a little? Thank you.
Is that better?
It is.
Okay. I got a question after seeing that presentation. I've seen a lot of buildings, excuse me, a lot of buildings with a lot of plumbing in them. I guess my question is, has there been any studies or tests done on if they have to drill new wells? If so, how many, how deep? I guess my concern is, are all of us in the neighborhood gonna end up having to drill our wells deeper?
The, now, I mentioned earlier that sometimes when a question comes up, I would go back to the applicant, because perhaps you'll get an answer to it and it's factually relevant to the hearing. You did make something, some comment, Mr. Alex, about having done well tests, or can you just reiterate that?
I've done well tests, but a new well would be drilled for...
Oh, you have not done that yet, okay.
There's an existing well in the site for the house, but that's not an area conducive to getting it to the mines.
That's the only information apparently available at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't know how many wells are gonna have to be built? How many?
A single well.
A single well for all them barns? And all of them barns to be code compliant with the state, they're gonna need to be sprinkled for fire suppression, that's gonna require reservoir tanks, we're talking a whole lot of water here. And I'm just wondering how that's gonna possibly adversely affect our wells.
And your name again, because I wanna make, I wanna, I wanna put your concern down with the right...
Dave Barts.
You're Mr. Barts, thank you.
Right.
I don't think in terms of this proceeding, we have any further information for you, but I certainly have noted your concern. Was Hedy Barts going to also speak? And I think this is Paul on Halverson Road, 8008, middle initial O. I'll go on with Tom or Sharon Glembach, Glembach? Come on up, please.
My last name is Glembaki. We're here primarily as character references for Mike and Joy Alex. They, we live next door to them, they initially came as a young married couple and obviously have a very productive family, the five children. They're good family people, they had a lot of family gatherings. As their neighbors, we never had any objections to noise, traffic. Mike was one of those neighbors who, you know, if you needed help, he was there to help. There were times where I would be suffering through back spasms and he would cut the grass or take care of the plowing the snow to help me out. And it seems as if part of, one of the issues is what type of a person is Mike and his character, and he is a type of neighbor that I was happy to have, sorry to lose.
Thank you.
Ditto. No, I really would like to say, I've lived next door to Mike and Joy for 10 years, and I could not have asked for better neighbors. Before Tom and I were married, I was single, Mike was there for me when I needed him. I had some issues with the house, he was always there. Wonderful neighbor, I never had a problem with noise disturbances, and we had no trees to buffer our properties. We were right next door to one another. We were able to watch the children grow, and as you can tell, they're very well mannered children. Wonderful neighbors, I couldn't, I can't speak more highly of them. And I think anyone would be lucky to have them as neighbors.
And again, the comments are appreciated, I appreciate you coming down here, and I will reiterate, just in terms of what I said would be helpful, it's helpful, and I'm sure it's helpful to the public here that you, you know, if people are worried, is he really gonna comply with the conditions and all that? But again, you're gonna find me rather religiously adhering to the code sections and all the things I'm supposed to apply.
Yep.
But thank you. Jeff Stenzel? Come on up, sir.
I live on Halverson Road, last 20 years. I guess my concern with this would be the traffic and the people that would be under the influence of alcohol coming down my street. The safety, would be a safety factor is what my concern would be. I'd be worried about my kids playing outside and people that were under the influence wouldn't be a safe thing in my neighborhood, obviously. The road is pretty quiet, it has its busy times, you have to, I've had to call the police at times to, you know, 'cause you get people that frequently speed and whatever. My other concern would be as a taxpayer, you know, me as Waterford, now I'm paying to have a cop at the end of the street more frequent, 'cause I know that there's gonna be people speeding and other things due to alcohol. And that worries me, and that's a concern, and it would be a safety. The other, if you're gonna push the traffic down County Line, then my concern is the school and the kids from the school. There's soccer games and whatnot, basketball games, there's a lot of traffic in that area, and my concern would be for safety at that point, too.
Thank you. I am Ron or Roe Pedro? Am I even close?
Lou.
Lou? Yeah, I just finished the first page. Oh, I deviated from it, I went over.
My name is Lou, I live on River Avenue.
I may have butchered your name.
Yeah, it's okay.
But by laying, by laying the sheet on top of the other one, you just skipped about 11 people, so I assume I'm forgetting.
All right.
Go ahead, sir.
I built my property 25 years ago on top of a hill on River Avenue, and from my second story of my home, I can see Alpine Valley's ski hill from my property, so I can see it a pretty long way, I can hear a really long way. My concern is that without a permanent sound system inside there right now for the testing, having portable sound systems and stuff, you're not gonna get a real accurate reading on how far the sound is gonna carry. I professionally DJed for events for 15 years, and I know that with alcohol and personalities with DJs and stuff, that as the night progresses, the music gets louder, the people get a little more rowdier, and by about 9 o'clock on, all you can hear is "ts, ts, 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 ts" all night. And that barn will act as a subwoofer, even though you're not installing subwoofers. There will be resonance that that sound will be carrying, and I can hear it. I hear stuff on Lake Tishigan, which is like a mile away from me, and I can hear people's voices talking and stuff, that I can hear that well. But I know that this event is a half a mile away, my home is in the woods, therefore I didn't have air conditioning installed, so I sleep at night with my windows open, and I enjoy the crickets, I enjoy the frogs. I used to enjoy the wolves howling until those went away, but hearing the "ts, ts, ts" all night is gonna drive me nuts. And I know my dogs and everything else are gonna start barking when they hear people laughing and screaming, and up and down that road at night on the weekends on County Line Road, it's a flat road, people look at it and they will race up and down, and then I will hear cars racing up and down there at 11 o'clock, midnight and stuff, and I'm just waiting to hear the giant crash at the end, which fortunately never comes. But in the aftermath, you drive down and you look down that road and you can see all the black marks of all these kids that were out there screwing around and stuff, and it's an easy road because there is no police, there isn't really anything on it, but the drop off on the edge of that road is pretty steep in the swamp and stuff, so I have a fear that people are gonna have a little too many fun, and they're gonna take off down that road and not realize, you know, how far down it is, and there'll be a lot more unfortunate events, but that's my main concern, so it's the sound and the people that'll be driving up and down that road, and even though you're trying to control the alcohol and stuff, it's pretty tough. People are gonna bring in alcohol, no matter what you do. They're gonna do shots, that's what people do, you know? And the more they drink, the more smarter they become, so that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I assume people heard as part of the presentation, conditional use permits are reviewable. The obvious thought that might go through many people's head is, are you saying something is a remedy after the fact? But when you're thinking of those concerns, just tuck in the back of your mind that a CUP if issued is reviewable and the applicant himself acknowledged that, so... Do you have any others?
Hi, I live on Grove Lane, I'm about maybe a quarter mile from the Halverson house, and I just have a statement I'd like to read to you.
Sure.
And before I read it, would also like to say... And before I read it, would also like to say that I've lived out in Tishigan pretty much my entire life. I grew up with the Strassers, they're a great family, never had any problems with them. I can understand why Dan might be upset that his garden plot abuts the property that this event barn may be on. My home is relatively close to this event barn, but I'm just gonna tell it like I see it. I live on Grove Lane, I've been there most of my life. My parents bought the property my home is on from the Helverson farm back in the sixties. I recently became aware of the plans for the Helverson house through a flyer that was left on my door. The person that created the flyer did not put their name on it, so I could not go speak to them. I did go speak with Mike and Joy and toured the grounds at the Helverson house. After doing so, I realized a lot of what was being said in the flyer was not truthful. A few days later, Dan Strasser and his wife, Luanne, came to my door with a petition against this plan for the Helverson house. Our conversation left me wondering why the Strassers, whom I've known most of my life, would be against such a venture. Luanne stated she would rather see a subdivision there and I strongly disagree. I think that would cause a lot more activity and problems and would disrupt a lot of the existing wildlife back there. The reasons they stated were noise, traffic increase and possible intoxicated drivers. After careful thoughts on these issues, I've come to the conclusion, this is flat-out hypocrisy. The Strasser family owns and operates businesses in Tishigan. They have a gas station with a service station, a convenience store, a car wash and a liquor store. They also have Captain Missy's Bar down on the river.
But there, let me jump, let me jump in and I, again, I don't do this to be rude, I do this to stay focused. Just as the Strassers are entitled to express their opinion, I am interested in your opinion, but not so much what businesses they might conduct elsewhere, whatever.
As an example to make my point that we already have the probability of intoxicated drivers driving down from River Road to Rab to Helverson. We already have, you know, businesses in the area that create these problems. We've had numerous farms converted to subdivisions that have increased the population greatly in that area. So as far as noise go, you know, the Strassers engage in hunting and snowmobiling activities and to each their own, I don't wanna ruin anybody's fun. However, I have been disturbed multiple times by these noises. Woke up at the crack of dawn from gunshots, hearing snowmobiles, going up and down the river, you know, sometimes till two or three in the morning. I don't complain about these things, it's just part of the community we live in. And I just feel that if my neighbors wanna vote against the business, then I'm gonna have to be more vigilant about calling the authorities when town ordinances that already exist are violated. Because that's what they're doing, they're violating town ordinances as far as noise control. And I've been woken up many times by commercial fireworks set off by Todd Shield right behind my house. And, you know, it's, when, when I mentioned these as a concern to Dan and his wife when they came to my house with the petition, I said, "Well, what about these things?" And they're, "Well, that's just Todd, that's okay." Well, how can it be okay for one person to disrupt your peace and quiet, but not another person? So I'm just having trouble seeing where all this is coming from, you know? I guess the bottom line is that these people bought the land, they pay taxes on the land and you're gonna tell them that they can't do what they have every right to do. And what my neighbors are already doing, I mean, how many of you guys have hobbies in your garage late at night running power tools or revving engines that keep people awake? So isn't that creating disturbances as well? I mean, how can we look at, at one person and say, "Oh, they're gonna ruin the community with all this noise and intoxicated driving" when we ourselves are guilty of doing the same thing? I just don't see where-
I, I understand your comments and I understand there is-
I just think they should be given the opportunity.
Potentially intoxicated driving from others, I understand there's potential intoxicated driving from other sources, noise from other sources. And where, where your comments are appreciated is we, I will be looking in the ordinances to see what criteria are stated about compatibility and all that, but again, in the ordinances and you'll see that.
Right, I realize this all has to go through legal channels and the processes, I'm just, this is just my point of view.
And it, I, I am not in any way critical of you for expressing it, it's just I'm saying in advance-
Do I submit this in writing to you?
You certainly can.
And I mean no offense to any of my neighbors either, I'm just saying, you know, we all create problems.
Let's see, Jack or Sue Hanrahan?
Um, all my concerns have been addressed.
Ron and Ruth? What is the last name, please? What's your last name, sir?
Burke.
Burke?
Sorry for my penmanship. I just wanted to add on some of the comments that have been made, but add additional comments on traffic. Two major roads that'll be coming into this facility, County Line Road and Helverson, both have what I consider dangerous hills. Currently and over the past several years, in that I've noticed on County Line Road especially, a lot of non-motorized bikes coming from the east somewhere, crossing 164, going up that hill and around the curve and then going down Helverson and either going down Rab Drive going west or continuing on to Northlake Drive. There's been many occasions personally myself where you have to slow down and wait to get over the hills so you could see if oncoming, oncoming traffic is coming, which creates a dangerous situation. Now we're talking about increasing traffic flow with the weddings and other venues. There is a concern there. On Helverson, I've noticed in the last two, three years, an increased traffic, walkers and joggers. Where they're all coming from, I, I don't know, but it must be down in the subdivision south of me. I live on Rab Drive to about a block east of Helverson. And, and that traffic comes down into our little subdivision where I live. So that's, and those roads are narrow. And the people walking on them, they don't step off, they want, they walk right on the road when a vehicle is coming. And it's a dangerous situation now and with increased traffic, it's gonna be really dangerous. So those are comments that I wanna add to the traffic situation.
Thank you. Kenast, I'm not getting the first name. K E N A S T? Come on up, sir, or are you?
My concerns have been addressed about those increased traffic on Helverson.
Okay.
Especially the traffic after he closes his, at ten thirty, that people wanna go out and drink more and they'll be running right down Helverson Road or Crews End, Captain Missy's, anyplace like that. And I've been there on Helverson Road for twenty-four years and just like the person said, that traffic has increased on that road and now it's gonna be even more.
And your first name was Phil, I figured out, thank you. Mike and it might be Sadie? And your last name, sir?
Sadie.
Sadie?
My concerns also have been kinda brought up, but Helverson to the south, being twenty-five miles an hour, is hilly. My concern is just for the traffic and that's the only reason I wanted to stop up here and bring it up. I don't know where you're gonna put the extra cars, County Line is hilly, narrow. The farmers and everything else that goes under the bicycles have been brought up, so that's my main concern about the amount of traffic that's gonna be on these roads.
Thank you.
You bet.
Brett Strasser? I apologize, I, do we have a, how about this, the address, two eight eight six three Stone Ridge Court? Your name, ma'am? Christie, okay, hi, thank you. And we have a Bill Miller? Come on up, sir.
First of all, I wanna thank everybody for allowing me to come up here and speak. My name's Bill Miller, I'm Assistant Chief of the Tishigan Fire Department, been on for twenty-eight years. I've been in the area, I've seen the area grow. I do recognize the concerns of all, all the people in this room. But primarily, my sole concern is gonna be right here, it's in black and white, NFPA Code One. It's in section eighteen, I can, I can read you off the references. It's gonna be solely to deal with the access to the property. Currently, it's a ten, about a ten-foot roadway coming in there. I drove in there with our utility truck, it was a F-150. I drove all the way back to the event barn. Currently, if there is a fire back at this residence, it's estimated to be about a fifteen-hundred-foot lay of five-inch holes. What that's gonna effectively do is shut that entire roadway down and that's just to get one engine in there. My concern, and again with NFPA Code One, says a minimum of twenty standards, twenty-four, twenty-four-foot roadway to come in there, unobstructed, all year round, so no parking, adequate turnarounds. It also addresses about water supply and sprinkler systems, access to the building. Depending on if there's a sprinkler system in place in the building, how much distance the roadway or the access to that building has to be. I, I'm only gonna speak tonight and I spoke with Chief Faudy in regards to this. The access to this property is very poor right now. If there would be a fire in this residence tonight, it would probably burn to the ground just for the fact that there's unavailability to get water back there. I'm gonna flat-out tell you, I'm gonna take an engine and I'm gonna go back there, I'm gonna lay some five-inch down the hose if we're prepared, most likely they're not gonna be. Now you're gonna try to use tanker trucks to drive down this roadway and it's ten feet wide, there's a ninety-degree curve on it, it's a blind curve, there's no way. The problem is, secondary is gonna be the thirteen-point-six or thirteen-six height restriction. So now we talk about setbacks off this roadway for the county ordinance. Now you push a twenty-four-foot roadway from that setback, you're gonna, you're gonna end up taking down several trees. The parking lot, it also states in NFPA Code One, section eighteen, about adequate turnarounds and accessibility. I just looked at the, the plan, occupancy of over two-hundred-and-thirty roughly. And how many parking spots did we have? There you go. And just flat-out doing the math, vendors are gonna come in with their trucks, their tents, for tables, chairs, vending, you know, vending, whatever. They're gonna shoot up these parking spots, there's not gonna be adequate room for me to come in there with a fire engine, but more than likely, it's gonna be, probably be an ambulance, 'cause let's get real, people get alcohol on board, they fall, they get in fights. Now I'm gonna come in there with an ambulance and where am I gonna turn around? To me, right now, primary concerns would be access. I haven't even, been able to look at plans or know about plans to question sprinkler systems, non-sprinkled access, water supplies, any of this.
Well, just, just really as much for informational purposes, where in your review processes does that come in?
Well, as, as part of this, the, the town fire chief has, has looked at preliminary plans and one of the conditions of approval of this is that final plans, detailed plans, engineering and access will all be reviewed by the town planner, town engineer and, and the fire, town fire chief prior to issuance of the conditional use permit. So all those issues have not been sorted out yet, but they're, they're-
With all due respect, I would, I would then encourage the notification of our fire department on our side because depending on how it's called in, if it's called in by cellphone, landline, where they're at, it could easily come through Racine County and will be the first two engine companies there, or first two EMS companies there. It's directly gonna, it's directly gonna impact the town of Waterford.
And just for my purposes, 'cause I don't know, do you have different fire standards for, than the town does in terms of like turnaround radiuses and those things?
No, it's, it's all addressed in, in truly NFPA Code One. We do go off the, just a standard, you know, developers, you know, twenty-four-foot roadways and thirty-some-foot turnarounds.
Well, the, the reason I brought it up-
So the town fire chief would use the same book?
Correct.
The town of Vernon?
Correct, he should be, correct.
The, it, it hasn't come, we haven't reached this point yet, but the town planner will be called upon again and he made the reference to conditions. Just generally speaking, if a conditional use permit is being considered, you'll note the word conditional in the title. The town planning department is very likely to have a list of conditions and I believe we're gonna hear more of what you just brought up addressed when you get to that part of what'll be recommended. If it is granted, what would be the recommended conditions? That's common?
Right, correct.
Okay, so-
And as far as access in and out of the property, you know, Helverson Road, you know, it's twenty-five miles an hour. It's thirty-five on County Line Road. You know, there is gonna be concern with the number of vehicles that are gonna travel through our juris that we're gonna have to deal with because these people have mishaps. You know, again, it just doesn't affect Waukesha County and the town of Vernon. It's gonna affect the town of Waterford and Tishigan Fire Department and how we respond and work, work with your resources ultimately because solely the town of Vernon and, and/or the Tishigan Fire Department will not be able to solely handle a fire at this place at all. We're gonna have to rely on each other and work together and I would hope that we would bridge that gap with the planning of this project because it's truly gonna impact both communities.
Understood. Thank you.
Do you need call references or do you, or sections or what do you want?
When, when I'm wearing my other hat as a city or village attorney, so many of your counterparts have hit me over the head with that NFPA, believe me. Although I am jealous, I have a really crappy paperback version and you'll notice this gentleman has quite the expensive book there, but-
Do you guys have any other questions?
I do not, I do not.
I appreciate the time to speak and if, if at all, I'd like to be involved in some of this process.
I think Mr. Malarkey is hearing you.
I'll leave my card.
Now, some of you indicated that you might wanna speak again. I'm not, I'm certainly not gonna cut anybody off. I am going to ask that you take into account that much has been said, but if you wanna speak again or you haven't spoken yet. Actually, you haven't spoken yet, so what is your name again, sir?
Mark Hendrickson.
Hendrickson?
Yep.
Have a seat, Mr. Hendrickson.
Two eight eight one two Grove Lane, Waterford.
Oh, you're on the sheet, I think.
I am?
No, you're not.
I think so. Pretty good if it is.
Give us the address again.
Two eight eight one two Grove, G R O V E, Lane, Waterford.
Go ahead, sir.
So most of the concerns that I have here have been brought up, but I wanna add in a few extra details and points. I moved out to that community because of a quiet neighborhood, noise is my chief concern as well. Sixty-five D B, which, and I, and I heard the Alex is here. I can do that. Good? Alright. Sixty-five D B, so I'm gonna ask you a question about the power meter you used.
65 dB, so I'm going to ask you a question about the power meter you used. Take it with me?
No, just...
Okay, all right. So when you discuss sound testing, it has to be done with a sound pressure meter, not a sound power meter. Sound power and sound pressure are two different ways of measuring sound. Many people confuse the two, because in the music industry, you're looking at sound power meters, but in the industrial end or industrial side of the house, you're looking at sound pressure meters. Sound pressure meters are the ones that actually interpret how your ear is going to translate. 65 dB for the town of Vernon is pretty high, compared to most communities have adopted 55 or less. When you hit 60, that's the peak annoyance level. And 65 dB is a blended number as well. Human hearing is between 10 Hz and 20,000 Hz. Now, if you're in my age bracket, that whole 20,000 is gone, you're down around 15,000. But in, when you do a sound study, the sound study has to be a combined, complete study. In other words, all the noises that are going to be present have to be present during the sound study, and that's not the case here. The sound study has to include tire traffic, has to include people talking, has to include a representation of the number of people that are going to be talking for the period of time that they're going to be talking. That's a sound test. The business that I'm in, we do a lot of sound tests in schools, hospitals, et cetera, in order to be sure that our equipment is not exceeding noise levels for hospitals or, you know, whatever community or, I should say, building application we're working in. So that test has to include tire noise, which is the one that I think the Strassers are referring to when they imagine their home, which if I understand correctly, they're moving from there, I'm not sure when, that they're going to replace the house up near the top of the hill. So what you're looking for is what sound is actually going to travel to the top of the hill? And that's not the high-frequency noises that come from, and I like the gentleman before me whose noise, I couldn't do that noise if I wanted to, but his noise representing the lower-frequency bands. And the lower-frequency bands are going to travel faster at night. Sound pressure is able to move through denser air. Cooler, denser air in the evenings when these events are going to be planned is going to carry much further than the 65 feet, 100 feet, 250 feet that's been discussed prior to this. So what you have to do is simulate that, simulate where the people are going to be impacted. I'm one of them. I'm up at the top of the hill, which is less than half a mile away, and I can hear everything that goes on. I've heard references to the fireworks and motorcycles and snowmobiles, and yeah, I hear them. But I don't hear them three times a week and a full weekend. Every week, I don't hear it that way. I get it every now and then, and I've walked over to Todd's place and said, hey, knock off the fireworks, man, you woke me up. Not a problem. But I don't expect that to happen three times a week, and that's what we're talking about here. So the sound test should include the lower frequencies, which include the peak traffic times. People have been referring to traffic. I'm referring to the tire noise that traffic is. And if anybody in the room, and I'm sure there's about 40% of us in here, are deer hunters, you've sat in a tree in the morning, in the afternoon, and in the evening and heard the tire noise from 164 into the other places that can travel as far as 2 and 1/2 miles, and that's what you're hearing. Now, those are road noises at 55, 65 miles an hour. Semi-trucks are running at somewhere around 85 to 90 dB, and then commercial traffic or four-wheel traffic is running at about 65 to 70 dB. And that drops off by about thirds as you get down into what's the annoyance level. Go ahead.
That in terms of this review...
Right.
The town has an ordinance.
Correct.
The town has a decibel standard that they measure. However it is they measure it, and that's what I consider here. Now, the place doesn't exist as yet.
Right.
And so, as I mentioned earlier, you always have the possibility that if someone has a conditional use permit, they violate either the permit or they violate an ordinance, whatever, that would jeopardize it. But the, just to be upfront with you, my review will simply confine itself to what their ordinances say at this point.
Agreed.
And obviously, if there's a recommendation that it should be granted, the recommendation would be that it also has to comply with that ordinance.
No, no argument there at all. So what you're also up against, though, is the number of complaints it's going to generate whether it complies with it or not. So the local police force is going to end up getting calls, emergency services are going to end up getting calls to respond to noises that they hear, whether they're 65 dB or not. When you combine the lower-frequency noises between 45 dB and 65 dB, they'll travel a lot further during the evening hours when these events are going to be held. So the impact on our community services is going to be high.
Understood.
Okay, with respect to that.
I don't set the policies, though.
No, understood.
Just so everybody's clear on that.
Make sure everybody's aware of it. We touched on the fire department, we've touched on impact to the police department. I think, do you have on record the letter that Bill submitted from the fire department?
I may, I don't know that, but... You have something you want included?
Leanne, do you have one?
Hand it in, otherwise I use the materials I've been given.
And then we have a letter also impacting those same services I just discussed from the police department in Waterford. You have that one? Okay, good, thank you. Greatly appreciated. Just make sure we get a copy of Bill's letter. And the supervisor from the town of Waterford as well. And all of these are going to impacting the resources in the town of Waterford. So we also talked a little bit about the road, and I wanted to reinforce a couple of items there. As folks didn't call out a few of the facts that exist where Halverson and County Line actually meet. At that 90-degree turn intersection, the distance from the turn up County Line Road to the top of the blind hill is right at 1/10 of a mile. And 1/10 of a mile is a very difficult distance to navigate if you have extra traffic, which we will. And one of the things that we did was a little bit of a study of our own on the amount of traffic that goes through at the time suggested by the Alexes on when these events are going to occur. So I'm not sure if you have a copy of these yet.
Reviewing a traffic study, it's done by a traffic engineering firm or somebody...
Do we have a traffic study done by an engineer?
Qualified on that, I...
No.
So there...
Do you have published stuff?
Yeah, there are published numbers in terms of the capacity of the roadway. Capacity of the roadway, but not the actual traffic that's on the roadway. We don't have that study. We do have numbers.
You have numbers, but you don't have a study?
No, DOT produces numbers on an annual or biannual basis or whenever they're done, and so we have numbers. I don't know the date of the numbers, but they're in the last couple of years. 2011 was the last numbers that were done. And they're compared to the capacity of the roadway. No, understood. But 2011 is eight years ago, and over the eight years, the capacity or the population of the town of Waterford as well as Tishigan and everyone else that uses that road has gone up about 44%.
Well, the people that live in the area certainly have a handle on it.
Sure.
You live in the area, people have expressed a concern about traffic. If I had a traffic study that I think was reliable in terms of that, remember, we're dealing with a substantial evidence standard as opposed to an opinion standard, and I think that's difficult for people. But certainly, I'm aware that there are concerns for traffic in the area. Certainly, people have expressed that the, this isn't a four-lane divided highway by any means that we're dealing with. So the point is taken. I don't know if that's helpful to you or not, but if we have actual traffic studies or something like that, I would...
Would it be helpful to me to give, remember, this is the Wisconsin DOT, the traffic?
Why don't we, if we stay with the agenda, you're going to have a response time, and we'll wait for that.
The materials, I just didn't know if you had a chance to see that.
Well, I know that's in there, but you're not up to bat yet. We'll get there. But again, other concerns.
So just running through my notes here, just a second. So we have addressed the sound issues, impact on fire, impact on police. Dan's talked about property incursion on his side of the offense. Bill's talked about the issues with respect to width, turnaround, accessibility. The traffic study that we did was to sit and count the number of cars during those peak times when they're offering it. We do have those numbers, and we can present those today. The sound power, sound pressure, we've talked a little bit about that, so we would definitely want a sound study done to make sure that the neighborhood isn't impacted by it. And the sound study has to include everything that's going to encompass, because sound power is additive. Sound pressure carries in the ranges from 10,000 to 20,000, so we need to run that bandwidth if you're going to run a true sound study and see how it is going to impact the neighborhood.
What I want to do, while you're still up here, sir...
Sure.
When you present, and again, we're treating this as what I described a quasi-judicial proceeding, substantial evidence, not just opinions, but it's also a public hearing, and people are entitled to be heard. And what I'm doing is I'm placing kind of a burden on myself to sort out what really should be considered or what weight it should be given, but so that you feel like you've been heard. What are your numbers on how many cars? I don't need a whole document, just tell me what you're talking about in terms of the number of cars.
3:30 to 6:30 on Saturday, a total of 70 coming in, 68 cars going out. And from 3:45 to 6:30 PM on the 21st, 114 cars coming in, 48 cars going out. So that was return traffic coming home from work. I'm sorry, which road was that? Coming down County Line, turning onto Halverson. Okay. And I'll hand you these real quick. And that's what I have to present.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
And I've gone through, everybody signed up, one person not signed up. Sir, I think you spoke before, so I'm on the round two. But again, we're not, I don't want to do a rehash. You didn't speak?
No, I didn't speak. I'm not on the list.
Oh.
I live within about less than half a mile.
Your name first.
Dennis O'Brien.
And where do you live, sir?
8524 Hayes Lane.
Go ahead.
My concern is, as you travel east on County Line Road, and you approach that hill, there's five blind driveways there. I know I've been in and out of them for 44 years, so they're my friends. And it's, if you're not exceeding the speed limit, it's okay, but cars exceed the speed limit, it sometimes gets close negotiating those driveways. I don't know if the town has looked at that, but as you're traveling east, going up that hill, there's five blind driveways. And so I assume that obviously there's going to have to be some increased enforcement there. The problem is, half that road is town of Waterford, half that road is Vernon, and Halverson, of course, is all Waterford. There's going to have to be increased enforcement, and that's going to be a burden on the town of Waterford. One other thing, that land has been used for hunting and agriculture for decades, and lights and traffic and noise are not conducive to hunting. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Now, going back to if people have spoken before, if you have something new or another concern or one that hasn't been expressed, please do so. If we're going to just repeat the same points, hopefully in terms of living up to my statement that I'll try and do the job, you can probably see I've been writing like crazy here. So before we go back to the applicant, I saw a hand in the back, I thought. Come on up, sir.
Lance Bloom, I was on there earlier, Melody Lane. I have nothing but a watershed plan either. 87 lot parking lot, was anything proposed for any of that, and where's all that water going to go?
I think when we get to the petitioner response, you might be able to enlighten some of these points, maybe not, but let's hear from the public yet, if there is anybody. Come on up, sir.
So I was curious, that County Line being residential road?
Yeah, your name, sir?
Cameron Jacob, and I live on River Avenue. But being County Line's a residential road, and obviously, he's going to need vendors, et cetera, what kind of CDL requirements of like semi-trucks for beer delivery, food delivery, et cetera, will be driving down County Line Road? And will that violate the current regulations on that road?
It's a B-class road right now. And then obviously, that creates more wear and tear.
You're making a point, certainly I'm not going to have an answer for it.
Yeah, no, and then obviously, that'll create more wear and tear on that road, which is then a burden on us taxpayers to repair that road, et cetera, at that point, when, you know, you've got semi-trucks driving up and down there weekly instead of, you know, a minivan, so. That's my concern.
Anyone else, anything new?
Yeah, I'm going to just go on the CDL thing with Ken Jacob, 28901 Grove Lane. Yeah, I'm going to just go on the CDL thing with that road. Now, if a semi was to come down there, or, you know, a stray truck, it's going to have a semi front end, there's no shoulder for that road, for that truck to pull, if it has to move over for any reason. There's no room to go. So Waterford, Waukesha County, somebody has to put a shoulder on County Line Road. I mean, if there was a biker there and I was coming down with my semi, I'm in control of the semi, I'm responsible for it, but where do we go? Has anybody thought that?
Again, I don't have answers for you.
Is that in the planning?
They're not, in terms of the planning, I'll be real candid with you. The consideration of a conditional use is not going to take into account if anybody's having CDL issues or whatever onto a road, at least in terms of the record we're making here. I understand your concern.
If a kid gets run over by a vehicle...
There are many reasons that could...
You guys don't care that.
No.
Yes, that's what you're saying.
No, I'm not going to debate with you, and I'm not going to have words put in my mouth, so. Fire apparatus go down the road, but your point has been made, it's in the record, and I'm going to move on to the petitioner's response.
And the same thing is, that road is so narrow now with Bill here with the fire department. If they need to park equipment out on there because they can't get up and down the driveway, where do they park all their equipment to try to put out this fire that he already stated is going to burn to the ground, you know? So it's another consideration.
I understand your point, and again, as Mr. Malarki said, there is a point in the review process where the fire departments are pulled in. This is not that point, and it's not what's before me at the moment. But thank you. We'll go to, yes?
Dan Strasser, one more comment here, sir.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask the question, did the Alexes ever prove if they have legal access to that driveway? I don't know how to prove that. My lot, my land, running north, meets with the Brayne LLC land coming from the south and forms a line, and their land would sit behind that. There is road he's been in there, I don't know if the road he's been bought for that line, or if it's in front of the line, and if there has ever been deeded access, or if they're landlocked.
Let me just remind you that as part of this process, it's been mentioned, there's going to be land combinations and CSMs, and if that type of thing is not picked up, and then somebody is not doing their job.
Right.
But I understand your point.
And if they do have legal access, how much actual road footage do they have? That's what we have to know, all right? They're pretty neck-down there, they don't have very much access to the road. Nobody's ever been concerned with that driveway? I brought that up in my first statement, but I forgot about the access and how much access they have. Somebody's got to study that. I would have thought the Planning Board of Vernon would have looked at that first and foremost, can we actually use this driveway? And that should have been the first question they asked before they even got anywhere in this process.
And we have the plan that shows the flag lot, which I think, that flag-shaped lot...
Who put that on there?
It's in, it's the rendering that we had, we received from the applicant.
Yeah, just like, just like he's, his 50-foot setback, because mine's at a CRP program.
And I will look at that. But the CSM process certainly should address the concerns that you're...
And when is this going to be addressed?
The, I don't know that, I don't know that they're going to combine the lots, I don't know that they're going to be given the CUP.
It's a condition, it's a, the CUP will not be issued until all those things are worked out, in terms of access, in terms of site design, drainage, certified survey map, stormwater.
None of that stuff has to be done before?
All of that has to be done before the conditional use permit's issued.
You're only at the stage to decide whether you're going to go with an event barn as a conditional use. The conditions... The conditions, which is a little bit later on the agenda, will be summarized by Mr. Malarki.
So even if you okay the conditions, they still got to meet all the requirements beyond that?
Sure, because the, just to say that they seem to qualify for the conditional use permit doesn't make it in effect. It's in effect only if and when they've complied with the conditions. That's why after we hear from the applicant, if he chooses to present anything further, we're also going to hear from the planner, so that the folks that are here know what those conditions are going to be. We just haven't gotten to that point yet.
And who enforces those regulations, the ones that have to be determined at a later time?
That's all up to the town. That's way beyond anything I'm doing tonight.
But the town actually enforces those issues?
The town even has the authority in an extreme situation to revoke a conditional use permit. And there have been conditional use permits that have been revoked here and there.
Very good. Thank you for hearing me.
So we'll go back to the applicant. Mr. Alex, are you, or Mrs. Alex, I don't...
Yeah, I can follow up on some of the questions that were brought up. First, just since it was last spoken about, those conditions, just to clarify, are conditions that we have to meet, and they do include the town, they include the county, they include engineering staff of the county, like I mentioned, all the different departments, and I can go through those again, but just to reiterate to the audience that there is a lot of oversight outside of the town as well, that has kind of jurisdiction. But those images were, those lot lines were not drawn by me. Those were pulled from GIS images from both Racine and Waukesha County, since we are on the border. I meshed, I checked to see if those two jive with each other, to make sure that they show the same lot lines, and they do. So in that drawing that you see, the dash line is superimposed on top of the GIS image that is received from, you know, you can go right now Racine County Mapbook, or you can go on to Waukesha, I don't remember what their online GIS is. But that's where it shows the three separate lot lines. So those yellow, narrow lines are what are superimposed from an aerial image. That's why you see the one on the left that separates our thirty-five acre parcel from, what's a seventy-five acre parcel? And then in the center is a five and a half acre parcel for the house. So just to clarify that. Part of the reason for not having a survey already completed is because it's a certified survey map that would be required. A typical boundary survey is probably, from the prices that I got, one-tenth of the cost of what a certified survey map would be, especially for a hundred and twenty acre parcel with two thousand feet of frontage on the river. There are a lot more implications. A certified survey map is exactly that. It's certified, it has an extra layer of oversight, where everything has to be portrayed on there, high watermarks, wetlands, all of that has to be shown on the CSM. So that's part of the reason that's not done at this part of the process, because that's a substantial investment. If you don't even get past this stage, you're not going to spend thirty thousand dollars on that. That kind of dovetails into some of the requirements as far as setbacks. Once that certified survey map is there, then we're able to apply, and our overlays can get put onto that certified survey map to say, okay, here's where the lot line is, we have a setback of fifty feet, or we have eight hundred and forty feet. All of that will be shown on the final set of drawings that the town will receive. Also, the county will receive that. Just as I mentioned before, and I want to just reiterate it, because it was brought up, for stormwater management, I believe that's what the one gentleman was asking about, for drainage or... The county is the one who oversees that, as well as the town planner. They have the jurisdiction to make sure that we're meeting any requirements. And with a hundred and twenty acre site, we have plenty of space to be able to accommodate any type of runoff or anything on-site. Those discussions have already been had with this preliminary stage of things, and they're already kind of in the hopper as far as, you know, we've had the wetland delineation done. That's kind of the first thing before anything else can happen. And surveyors, as Mr. Strasfer, I think, saw him out there the other day, they're starting their work for at least that boundary portion of their work, as we know, time is kind of running out on us being able to continue with things. There's a question about fire suppression. There isn't a requirement for these buildings to be sprinkled. They typically have monitored service. So I think that was with respect to asking about the size or quantity of the wells. That well's purpose would be to service the kitchen, as well as the two male and female bathrooms, which each have approximately three toilets in each, as well as one family restroom. Again, Chief Eldy, I've had multiple conversations with him, and we would work with him, you know, obviously with his approvals, and showing the fire lanes and access that they have. Right now, we show them in the parking lot, and that will be further defined, and he would ultimately have to sign off on that. I did get the information from Lieutenant Miller. I would have loved to have been able to speak with him when he came onto the site, tried to flag him down as he was leaving, but weren't, wasn't able to. I'd love to be able to look at it and answer any questions. We want to have a safe site. We don't want to have, you know, this is our personal house. We don't want to have our house burned down. We don't want to have our barns burned down, or people be hurt. And I guess that comes back to the fact of, this is our personal residence, three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. We're having this conditional use as an accessory use to our conditional use. This is going to happen from, you know, forty to seventy days. If you add up all of our, you know, max number of days that we expect to have events, that's at the top end, seventy events, probably more realistically, forty to fifty events. So I think that speaks to what this use ends up being. Getting back to the question of services, I agree, we're on a borderline. But that being said, the Town of Vernon has policing from the Waukesha County Sheriff, Captain Mark Moonin, I got his information last week. He's out of town. I think a family emergency or death in the family has kept him from being able to get back in touch with me. But they have the jurisdiction in the area. Both Big Bend and Waterford are part of the Smart Response program that everybody buys into. I did have a chance to talk with Big Bend. The first comment was, well, you realize you're not in our jurisdiction? And I said, I do understand that, but being a part of the Smart Response, wanted to at least make that contact. I reached out to the Town of Waterford earlier in the week, haven't had a response back from them. I know that they had some, you know, specific concerns that were raised tonight. You know, I'd love to be able to keep those relationships, you know, intact and working, but I just want to be able to have them, you know, reach back out to me, so that we can, we can make sure that everybody's on the same page. I know there were some factual errors, as far as one of their concerns was that there would be alcohol violations, and you'll see that in their response, when we're, you know, saying that it doesn't have to be a licensed facility. We are going to be a licensed facility. So I just want to make sure that they're brought up to speed, as far as how we're going to operate, and how we see our property running. For traffic, I referenced it, and it's in your packet, and there are some details as well. For the Wisconsin DOT does their traffic counts, and their daily traffic count, their average daily traffic count back from two thousand and eleven. And I believe the person who is speaking, I apologize if I didn't get a chance to write down your name, sir, but you mentioned that the population has increased by forty percent from two thousand and eleven. So if we're using two thousand and eleven, that should be a conservative number. And again, with approximately a dozen homes directly on County Line or Halverson within a mile, the traffic counts that it generates, I think everybody in this room would agree, is generated from the smaller arterial streets. Similarly, there are other commercial uses, whether it be trucking companies or private businesses that just operate out of their home, as well as other establishments like Captain Missy's that operate farther and deeper into those small local roads. So we obviously would accommodate anything that we would need to, if there have to be special deliveries for trucks and that. As far as weight limits, we would obviously adhere to that. But there are other commercial uses back that would use those same roads. And actually, now that it's school time as well, if anybody is concerned about County Line Road turning into Halverson, around three thirty every day, there's a school bus that makes a Y-turn in front of our property to turn back around and head back to one sixty-four. So that can give you an idea of, you know, the size of that intersection in that location. As far as, I just thought it ironic that they do that in that area for an area that's considered very dangerous. I'll also, I kind of ran some numbers for traffic counts, and I can provide these to you. Ultimately, if you boil it down, and I take, if it's from the neighbor's perspective, they would say worst-case scenario of the most number of events that we could have, I break them out between large, medium, and small events, ultimately totaling approximately seventy events, and break it down as to how many cars would come, put it on an annual basis. If you put it on an annual basis compared to what's on County Line Road, it comes out to two point one seven percent of the car traffic on that road. And I can provide that to you as well. And the other thing that I would want to bring up to a predominant number of the people here tonight that are Town of Waterford residents is that their own comprehensive plan states that the areas in question that are currently farmed or agricultural are zoned in their twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan to be residential, and not only residential, but higher density. So similar to the density that many of them live in, in the neighborhoods. The twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan shows all of the land from the south of, South County Line Road in Waterford, including the neighboring parcel to the south is residential with a density of one point five to two point nine acres per dwelling, so one and a half to three acres. And then it increases in density from about a quarter mile west of one sixty-four. So within a half mile of my home, they have on one, on County Line Road, increased to a density of four thousand square feet to, so roughly an acre, to one and a half acre per dwelling. So they're going to, their comprehensive plan, their, their next step, what they would like to see is higher density on that already. So if their argument is they don't want to see increased traffic, they don't want to see...
And that may or may not come to pass. I appreciate you want to try to rebut everything that's said, but the...
I think it speaks to the point of the Town of Waterford's view of what that road can take. If they're saying that that road, you know, should be able to service as much as, you know, one residence per one point five acres, to then say that's going to be increased, you know, burden and wear and tear on that.
Understood. I have some DOT information from you. I have, I hope I remember the name right, Mr. Hendricks, Hendricks Counts. If you have something you want to add to it.
Yeah, I can give, I can give you the traffic count that I generated, and I'll give it to you once I'm done here. Also, talking about policing. Yes, that's where it was. Thank you. My helpful sidekick. We did a little bit of research on some other venues in the area. What we did is we wanted to simulate a similar aspect to ours. So a rural setting, agricultural kind of nature. Obviously, if it's a barn, you'd think that at one point was an agricultural use, but not only that, not have it be in an area where it's, you know, further developed to the sense where they have their own police staff. So we picked two in Racine County. The landing of eighteen, or the landing eighteen forty-one, that's in Burlington. That's under Racine County's sheriff's jurisdiction. Since they were established in two thousand and six, or two thousand and fifteen, they've had three calls for service, one for burning violation, one for an ordinance violation, and one for a rescue run. I know that Lieutenant Miller mentioned about the increased EMS. We do agree that that's something we want to, we are going to facilitate. But just to let everybody know, sometimes the unknown, you assume, you know, I would ask how many people who are here have been to, you know, a handful of weddings every year, and how many times have the police been called to each of those weddings or events? Similarly, the farm at Dover, which has operated since two thousand and fifteen, in that time, they have four calls for service, a couple of rescue runs, accidental property damage, and assistance requests. So I can provide these, but that's just to give everybody an idea of properties that are up and running, and currently running, what is their track record, and what is a realistic, I thought of what that service is going to be needed. Yeah, and then Joy has it coming.
The other thing is, we have planned for traffic control at the, at the end of all of our events, as well as trained security staff for all of our events. So the ironic thing is, while the main concern is traffic on Halverson and County Line Roads, having a traffic, designated traffic security at that intersection is what we are looking to do for all of our events. So not only will we have traffic control there for our events, but having a presence at that intersection is likely to slow down speeders, as well as other potential drunk drivers coming from other establishments in the area. So we're actually, in a sense, providing a service to the community there by having presence on that intersection.
Why don't, why don't you give me those if you've got them as extras? I'll ask you to stick around for two minutes after this, just to make sure I have what I'm supposed to have, and give you back what's yours. What I'm going to suggest we do, unless anybody up here needs a break, is the next aspect of this proceeding is, Mr. Malarki would weigh in again, and this is a critical part in terms of what is going to be considered, because this is the part where I assume in your presentation, you're going to include what conditions the town would be looking for were this conditional use permit to be approved. Yeah?
I have one question regarding his, so seventy events would actually be, if a Friday, Saturday, Sunday counts as one event, two hundred and ten days a year, that it'll be in service?
No, so I counted in for the traffic counts. What I did is, that's why I broke it out into large, medium, and small events. So the large event would be the Saturday reception. The small events would be that rehearsal dinner and the gift opening following.
Well, when we say seventy...
Right, you know what, let's just do it this way, because I don't want a back and forth. How many, three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, your events, how many days?
Our definition of the word event, it would be seventy events, which would mean that a wedding weekend would be three events. For the town's purposes of defining what an event is, that's one event.
So seventy days out of the year would be our max that we see.
I think, I think what we're interested in is the number of days, as opposed to the terms. So you're anticipating seventy days out of three hundred and sixty-five?
And of those seventy days, twenty-five to thirty-five would be the large events. That would be the weddings.
Right, but I think it's clear for people if we're talking about the days. And we're not going to, we're not going to debate it, we're going to hear the conditions, but you're answering my question, and my question is how many days?
Seventy total events. Of that seventy, twenty-five to thirty-five are wedding events. Everything else is smaller events.
How many days?
Seventy.
Thank you.
Just don't confuse the word event in the ordinance language.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yep, versus the event that I'm telling you, as far as what an event would be.
And we seem to have lost Mr. Malarki, which is the next part of it. Let's, let's take a break. Let's take a break. Let's take a break. Well, it's kind of full, and it's just me and a partner, and all we're doing is... I don't know how necessary the gavel was, but it really is a power trip to use it. So what we'll do, and this is a significant part of the hearing, and I think one of interest, not just to me in terms of making this recommendation, but in terms of you as the members of the public, because you've heard a lot about this is a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit has conditions, and the town's planner should be able to articulate what conditions would be imposed were this to be recommended, and then you'll hear them from him. So you've got a final report?
I do. Thank you very much, and thank, thank everybody for bearing with us and sticking around tonight. So my final report basically is the recommended conditions on the event barn and the bed and breakfast. They're kind of two separate things, but we know that they're kind of, they're joined as part of the operation. They're two separate things, only in the fact that they're handled differently in the, in the code of ordinances. The bed and breakfast is, was already established as a conditional use in our, in our ordinances, so there was already a set of conditions that were laid out for it. And the event barn was the unspecified conditional use that became specified through the process. And those, the bulk of those conditions were, were generated by the planning commission through a public hearing that allowed the use at all, and allowed the applicant to apply for a conditional use for the venue. So what I'm going to do, and this is fairly long, and I'm going to try to get through it very quickly, is just go through the recommended conditions for each of these. And depending on how the hearing examiner finds for this, that, that these may or may not be incorporated, depending on if, if the planning commission and board ultimately accepts the recommendation of the hearing examiner, and it's approved or not approved. So with that said, here are the conditions. First of all, the condition, the conditional use approval would apply to the existing parcels, the three parcels that were noted on the maps. Those were 215-5997, 215-699-8001, 215-699-8002. And the conditional use approval would be limited to the conditional use boundary that's identified in the plans presented to the Town of Vernon on August 28th, 2019. The approval is limited to Michael and Joy Alex doing business as Alex Homestead LLC and Halverson House LLC for the property located at South 110, West 23450 County Line Road, Waterford, Wisconsin, 53185 for an event barn, and bed and breakfast on the subject property in accordance with the plans, documents, and specifications presented to the Town of Vernon on August 28th, 2019, summarized as follows. So operation of an event barn, including the 30-foot by 60-foot two-story main barn to be used for dinner service, dancing, cocktails, and other events; the 20-foot by 80-foot two-story walk-in hay loft attached to the main barn to be used for a bar area or areas, restrooms, an NSF kitchen, and storage; outdoor courtyard areas adjacent to the main bar and walk-in hay loft for outdoor gathering space and ceremonies; outdoor ceremony locations; the 15-foot by 30-foot two-story granary building to be used for a game area; casual seating and lounge to serve as groom's quarters for wedding events; the 30-foot by 50-foot two-story and the detached two-story garage to be used as storage. And then for the bed and breakfast, the operation of a portion of the residence as a bed and breakfast, limited to five bedrooms and two beds per bedroom and 14 guests at a time. So the way I've broken this out is, is basically precedent conditions, but what, what needs to be satisfied before the conditional use can be issued, and then subsequent and ongoing conditions, things that have to be satisfied in perpetuity as, as long as the conditional use is in effect. So the conditional use permit shall not be issued until: the petitioner provides a concise conditional use boundary and legal description substantially consistent with the boundary identified in the plans presented to the Town of Vernon on August 28th, 2019. The petitioner shall obtain the necessary approvals and satisfy all comments, conditions, and concerns of Waukesha County Department of Environmental Health for private onsite waste system and well and restaurant license; the Town of Vernon and Waukesha County Department of Land Resources for erosion control and stormwater management; the Town of Vernon Planner, Engineer, and Fire Chief for the detailed site plan and grading. Just because it was such an issue that was brought up and discussed extensively tonight, I'll also specify that includes site access and driveway location. Town of Vernon Fire Chief or designee of the proposed event barn, including the site plan and access, the event barn and property shall comply with any and all recommendations provided by the Fire Chief or designee. Such inspection is for the town's purposes and shall not be relied upon by the property owner as any assurance of safety nor of compliance with all applicable laws, which shall be solely the responsibility of the owner and the event barn operator. The Town of Vernon for proposed signage and sign lighting per Section 300-13 of the Town of Vernon Code of Ordinances. The Town of Vernon, Waukesha County, the City of Muskego, and all reviewing, objecting, and approving bodies for a certified survey map to combine parcels or lots to create a lot area of at least 20 acres for the event barn operation. There's a general condition here for, for the reimbursement of all professional costs as well. So that's all, all the things that have to happen before the conditional use permit can actually be issued. There is one thing that I had listed: The applicant shall provide written proof to the town building inspector that the Waukesha County Environmental Health Division has examined both the water system and the sewage disposable, disposal system, and has made a general health and safety inspection of the facility, and has granted its approval. The Waukesha County Environmental Health Division may impose any conditions required to ensure that all necessary health and safety standards have been met. The town building inspector shall withhold all building permits for the bed and breakfast until the Waukesha County Environmental Health Division provides documentation to the town building inspector that the necessary inspections have been completed and any deficiencies have been corrected and all conditions satisfied. So that's a general condition for the bed and breakfast that I want to make sure happens before the conditional use permit is issued. In terms of subsequent and ongoing conditions for the event barn, again, the vast majority of these were established as part of the Plan Commission's unspecified conditional use determination for an event barn. I have made some modifications, and I'll highlight those as I go through in terms of what's been modified based on my feedback prior to tonight and then after hearing discussion tonight. So the definition: The event barn is limited to existing agricultural buildings originally constructed for bona fide agricultural purposes, and may be presently part of a functioning farm, or may be remaining buildings following the termination of farming activities, used by individuals or groups for rental fee or other form of remuneration to accommodate private functions, including but not limited to meetings, banquets, weddings, gatherings associated with anniversaries, birthday parties, and reunions, and other similar gatherings and celebrations. Such a use may include designated outdoor areas in the same lot as the agricultural buildings for event barn activities, kitchen facilities for the preparation or catering of food, and the serving of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption only during scheduled events and shall not be open to the general public. The minimum lot area shall be 20 acres. No building, structure, use, or parking associated with the event shall be located less than 100 feet from any adjacent lot line permitting a residential use. No building, structure, use, or parking associated with the event shall be located less than 250 feet away from any residence not owned by the applicant or the operator. The operator of the event barn shall reside on the same lot as the event barn or a lot immediately adjacent. The subject property must abut directly upon an arterial or collector street as defined in Section 200-9 of the Town of Vernon Code of Ordinances, and the event access to the parcel shall be from the arterial or collector street. Property access on a collector's street shall be no further than one mile from an arterial street. Events must be served by a private onsite waste system, not including portable facilities, and a private onsite well, a municipal sewer system, and a municipal water system, or a combination of both. Restroom facilities associated with the private waste system shall be located within the event barn. Private systems shall be sized appropriately for building occupancy and approved by Waukesha County Environmental Health. Events shall be limited to no more than one event per day, and no more than three events per calendar week. For the purpose of this condition, an individual event shall be, shall include one entire occasion. For example, a scenario in which a renter reserves a site for a Saturday wedding, but is also onsite for a Friday rehearsal and Sunday gift opening would be counted as one event. There shall be no more than 230 attendees per event. Attendees include all persons present at the time, including employees, catering services, and other support service providers, property owners, staff operators, hosts, guests, and invitees without limitation. Use of structures and capacity is required to comply with all federal, state, and local fire and building code regulations.
Sean, I have to stop you for a minute.
Please.
I think you have to say "per day" when it's a three-day event, otherwise the maximum number of people for the three-day event will be 230-some days, literally by what you just said.
No more than 30 attendees per day.
Per day of the...
Per day of each event.
Event.
Per day of the event.
As they say, "and event" is a three-day event.
Correct, correct.
When you add up the people, that means you add up three days of people, literally. So we have to make that...
Thank you for, I appreciate the clarification. Events shall not begin prior to 8:00 a.m. or continue past 11 o'clock on Friday and Saturday. Originally, it was approved as 11:59 as part of the unspecified conditional use for event barns anywhere in the town, but the property owner has, has limited events till 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday with...
11:30 is the site, and 11 is the guests.
Right. And, and so, so that's the event itself, 11, and then everyone off the site by 11:30 unless they are renting rooms at the bed and breakfast. 8:00 a.m., events ending at 11:00 p.m., everyone, all guests out by 11, all guests and staff out by 11:30. On Sunday through Thursday, events shall not begin prior to 8:00 a.m. and shall end by 9:30 p.m. with all guests and staff out by 10:00 p.m. These limitations for final, for everyone out, apply to setup and takedown activities associated with an event and the arrival and departure of attendees. Alcohol shall not be served, I, I, sorry, I should back up. I want to stay here to be very clear in terms of the hours of operation, that guests that have rented rooms in the bed and breakfast are not obligated to be off the premise by, by those same closing times, but shall be limited to use of the house and, and the bed and breakfast at that No sale of alcohol is permitted unless an alcohol beverage license for the event barn is obtained from the Town of Vernon. There shall be no sound amplification devices used in association with outdoor event areas before 9:00 a.m. or after...
You skipped J.
What's J?
Alcohol shall not be served past...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. Alcohol shall not be served past, and we originally had it as 11:00 p.m. as part of the unspecified use, but the applicant has, has noted that the hours would be 10:30 p.m. So those are the hours, the conditions that I have. Alcohol shall not be served past 10:30 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, and 9:00 p.m. on Sunday through Thursday. So it's, it's a lesser number than was, was approved as part of the unspecified use. Down to, down to L. There shall be no outdoor sound amplification devices used in association with outdoor event areas before 9:00 a.m. or after 8:00 p.m. There shall be no sound amplification within buildings before 9:00 a.m. or after 11:00 p.m. Sound amplification devices shall be located at least 100 feet from our property lines and directed to minimize impact to adjacent properties, and shall comply with Chapter 221, the noise ordinance of the Town of Vernon Code of Ordinances. And so that was what the language for the unspecified conditional use was, was written as, and I've extended that condition to say for the noise ordinance of the Town, the Town of Vernon, and any amendments thereto, so they'll be subject to any amendments thereto, and there shall be no exceptions for the event barn operation as an activity or event under Section 221-2A11. And what that basically says is that the town can approve exceptions to the noise ordinances for activities or an event, so there's no confusion. We're excluding this event barn from applying for exceptions for the noise ordinance. Also mentioned tonight by the applicant that there'd be no subwoofers on the property, and we would say that no subwoofers can be allowed or used as part of sound amplification as well. Exterior lighting to be used in association with events shall not exceed 15 feet in height above the ground, and light sources shall not be visible from lot lines measured five feet above the lot line. There shall be no open fires associated with the operation except where approved by the Town of Vernon Planner in writing within specifically designated locations. As part of the application, there is one location for a potential fire pit that is shown in the plans that would be approved as, as part of the conditional use approval if approved. Number of parking spaces shall be equal to one parking stall per three attendees as defined above. At no time shall the number of attendees exceed three times the number of stalls. That's, that's a condition that's consistent with our generally assembly uses within the town Code of Ordinances. All parking areas shall be clearly defined and designated with appropriate surface materials determined by the town Plan Commission based on surrounding aesthetic character and uses, topography, and drainage, and potential for dust. And so the condition that I've, I've extended this to basically say parking may be gravel or a pervious pavement system. Parking blocks designated individual spaces are required. And that's a condition basically to ensure that there's, there's plenty of space as required by the ordinance, and that because it's not going to be marked, they'll, they'll be gra, they'll be marking by the parking blocks. There shall be no parking associated with the event barn on any public road. Any area occupied by outdoor tent shall not exceed the square footage of the event, event barn, and is limited to 3,400 square feet, which is the footprint of the event barn itself. The Plan Commission may require landscaping, screening for, for parking in outdoor areas used in conjunction with events to provide buffering for adjacent residential uses. This was a condition that was in the, in the unspecified conditional use approval, but since the Plan Commission is not going to be making any changes to the conditions set forward, I'm going to strike that condition at this time with the note that there's, there's appropriate landscaping and screening that surround the entire property already in place. The exterior of buildings to be used for event activities may be repaired or refurbished, but shall not be substantially modified as to significantly alter the character of the, of the building. The floor area of an existing building to be used for event activities may be expanded for event activities by no more than 10%, provided all building and zoning requirements are satisfied. This does not include alterations made to accommodate for such items such as access or circulation, which will be considered on a case-by-case basis. The event barn conditional use permit shall be reviewed every two years by the Town Plan Commission to determine compliance with the conditions and requirements of the permit, and may be terminated in accordance with Section 300-22 to A, Sub 9, Sub B of the Town of Vernon Code of Ordinances. So those are the subsequent and ongoing conditions for the event barn itself, the subsequent and ongoing conditions for the bed and breakfast. Modification of the structure or grounds may be made only if such changes are compatible with the character of the area or neighborhood and the intent of the applicable district in which it's located. Off-street parking shall be provided at the rate of one parking space for each room rented. The front yard shall not be for off-street parking for temporary guests unless the parking area is screened from view with natural plant material and found to be compatible with the neighborhood. The number of rooms shall be limited to five sleeping rooms or less, excluding those used by the occupants of the facility, and no room may contain more than two beds. One on-premise sign may be allowed provided that such sign is not more than 16 square feet in size. All necessary state and county permits, certifications, or requirements shall be obtained as a condition of approval of the bed and breakfast. Room rentals to families or individuals shall not exceed 14 consecutive days. The bed and breakfast facility must be accessory to and contained within the single-family dwelling occupied by the owner, not a manager of said premises. The only meal to be provided to travelers' guests shall be breakfast, and it shall only be served to guests taking lodging in the Two conditions that will be added that were, that are not in the ordinance are that the, the bed and breakfast itself is only used in conjunction with the, the event barn events. And the use of the bed and breakfast is limited to those who have rented the rooms in the bed and breakfast.
I don't understand what you're trying to mean.
So the idea is that there could not be two events, someone could not rent the bed and breakfast rooms if they're not part of the event going on at the event barn. So you couldn't have two events going on. You couldn't have guests in the, in the bed and breakfast that have, that have no relation to the events.
But I think you have to say that if there is an event in the wedding venue, the only ones who can rent the bed and breakfast are participants in the event. Is there no event in the bed and breakfast, or no events at the event venue, then bed and breakfast can be rented out? That's what you're trying to say?
Yes. I, I would revise my condition to state as such. If, if there's an event going on in the venue or event barn, the bed and breakfast can only be rented out by guests of the event barn. Otherwise, it's not limited as to who can rent the bed and breakfast rooms. Does that get the condition?
Yeah. It would be tough to deal with if that's the petition. An event starts on Friday at 8:00, the guests have to be out, they have to rent a room on Sunday night.
So how would you suggest we modify it?
I don't know that you can. It's the condition that you proposed.
Right, but I'm open to suggestions if you think there's, there's, there's a lack of clarity.
Oh, I understand that you're saying that's what you're intending to say, is they can't have, you know, two things going on at one time.
Yeah, so, so there can be no more than one event per day, right? And so, and so by that nature, that if someone is in the, the bed and breakfast that morning and hasn't gotten out yet, that event, that event's still going on. That's an event. And so no one could, to rent the event barn that day unless they were associated with that party in, in the bed and breakfast. So it sounds like the petitioner's agreeing to that.
I'm just telling you what it says. That's the modify, is that there's no more...
Great, and I, and I appreciate it. All right, so that's the subsequent and ongoing conditions of the bed and breakfast. There are also subsequent and ongoing conditions to both of them, but I won't go through these because they're standard administrative conditions to all conditional uses that get approved in the town, building inspector approval, fire chief approval, premises kept neat and orderly in fashion, inspection within 24 hours by the Town of Vernon, and then obtain appropriate permits. And then there's a list of other conditions as well that are, that are legal in nature for all conditional uses in the town.
Mr. Examiner, the two of you, I have a request there. Do you ask the petitioners, and this is what we normally...
Well, we have, we have an agenda item on it. That's what you're referring to, Sub I? The, what the town attorney is referring to and what I'm indicating was on the agenda. You've now heard that there are conditions that get imposed. You've also heard over the course of this hearing that anything that gets done is based upon substantial evidence. The town planner has articulated numerous conditions, both precedent and The town planner has articulated numerous conditions, both precedent and ongoing. The understanding I have, and I'm going to confirm that in the course of this hearing, is that the petitioner, the applicant, was aware of those conditions and discussed the slight modifications that Mr. Malarky made as he read them into the record. And in terms of the need to present substantial evidence, it's my understanding that you're in accord that if this conditional use permit is authorized, you accept all of those conditions. So, we don't get into is there substantial evidence to justify them, because he's not contesting them, and he doesn't have to present any substantial evidence as to why they would not be acceptable, because he's accepting him. And at least that part of the process is greatly simplified by the recommendation being accepted by the applicant. Doesn't control the outcome, but it's a substantial portion of what we were here for tonight. So, I hope I put that in a way that made sense. And again, just so I'm clear, you did indicate, Mr. Allison, there's two of you, I'm going to hear from your wife.
Okay.
Okay.
She's...
The, so that essentially is the content of this public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing and give you just a brief explanation as to where we go from here. And where we go from here, as I indicated, I will make every effort to look at everything that's been submitted, consider the governing law, particularly this state law that you've heard about that requires this substantial evidence, make a recommendation to the town bodies that I'm in effect here acting for, and they will then review that recommendation. Because they have removed themselves from the process, it isn't going to be a second kick at the cat. They're either going to accept that recommendation, or they're going to reject it. I would not anticipate that it becomes modified, because in fact, it has been turned over to take all of this in and analyze whether there's substantial evidence to support it or to not support it independently through me. If they take a second kick at the cat, then this was never done independently through me. They go right back to the processes that they said they feel had to be set aside and do it this way. And if I put that a bit convoluted, I apologize. It's a little past nine-thirty. I'm reasonably sure I opened up speaking better. The last thing I want to do is, I'll mention to you as a town, I have the privilege of kind of getting around here and there, especially in this part of the state, and sometimes the communities are, shall we say, less courteous than what has been demonstrated by the residents of these communities. So, for that, I sincerely thank you. I do not mean to be patronizing, but this hearing was so courteous that the deputy got bored and left. So, you should congratulate yourselves on that, and I am thanking you for that. So, with that, anything else, Mr. Malarky?
Yes, I apologize, but there's one more thing I should add, because we did hear it tonight. So, it's one more condition that I'd like to add. We have not closed the public hearing yet.
I just reopened it.
And this would be, this would be one of the ongoing conditions for the event barn operation, because we did hear from the petitioner tonight that they would staff some type of traffic control at the intersection of Halverson Road and County Line Road at the end of all events.
Nice catch, I do recall that now. And the same question, that if this is granted, is acceptable to you as the applicant's?
Yeah, the only question I would have is there a distinction between the size of event? Is someone staying at the bed and breakfast then going to require us to walk them to the end of the driveway? I think there should be a threshold for the size of event larger than...
Since this condition is going to be somewhat cast in stone when we end, you may want to just take a shot at clarifying that and then line it up that way.
I would say events that entail the use of the event barn.
Okay.
And...
And that's fine, I mean, that's your recommendation, but they also talk about security and security.
Yeah, so I thought that was the same person, the traffic controller, is that also the security person, or is that not?
There'll be designated people on our staff. It might not be the same person, but we will have...
So, designated, you have a designated security personnel, at least one person for every event? Okay, so I'd like to add that condition as well, that...
And these are conditions applicable to the events that include the event barn?
To the event barn, yes.
Then I understand it. And I'm...
And again, I would say, you know, applying that to a certain size, if it's that gift opening of fifty people, I think that would be unreasonable to have security personnel for that versus, you know, a wedding event of a hundred or more.
Right, but any number I throw out is going to be arbitrary in a sense, and where do you draw the line?
Well, the one thing we're not here to do, I suspect, is negotiate the conditions. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Malarky, you're expressing that condition to apply to event barn.
So, yeah, so events that entail the event barn, there'll be traffic control, staffed at the intersection, and at least one security person for all events. And so, both these conditions would apply to events with a hundred or more attendees.
And that's acceptable.
Yeah, that matches our plans.
Then I will just ask that you, since the report that I have doesn't include the modifications, I will need that.
I will get that due tomorrow morning.
That's fast. So, I'm going to reclose the public hearing, and I'm not going to tell you the exact date I'll have the recommendation in, but I will certainly, see, Labor Day is the second, isn't that? I'm targeting the sixth, so as lawyers go, that means I'll probably have it there the tenth. With that, I'm going to, unless, we're going to declare this hearing adjourned. Thank you again.